This is our regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 21st. So I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Iverson?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
Councilmember Riley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Malkani?
Here.
And Mayor G?
Here. So please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, that brings us to our adoption of the agenda tonight. I'll turn to our city manager. Any changes or additions?
No changes, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adopt our agenda?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously. So it is a pleasure tonight to see the things that we have on our items for the good of the city and lucky for me that I get to have the first item be one of my favorite things, which is Public Works Week. So I see the public works staff, which we love here in Arinda. And so I want you guys to come up. I do want to recognize, for those who don't know, May 19th to the 25th is National Public Works Week. And if you have ever turned on your faucet, driven on the road, flushed your toilet, and a few other handy things, then you like public works people. So we love public works people and I'm especially, since I've spent my entire career in the public works business, especially glad to recognize you guys and all of our staff that help in public works tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and read this lovely proclamation and then I'm going to come down and make sure that we all take a picture with you guys, okay? So, all right. So whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Arinda, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it's in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the city of Arinda to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association, now therefore be it resolved that the city of Arinda does hereby recognize this week of May 19th to the 25th as National Public Works Week. We urge all of the citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. So Scott and Seva and all of our public work staff, thank you guys. You work very hard and sometimes very much behind the scenes, but what you do is very important. So let's have a photo opportunity and I'm going to let you say something if you'd like.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the sentiment and the nice proclamation and the time you're devoting to it. And we also certainly appreciate the support from city council because we have a lot of items and we appreciate you always consider the information we provide and make good decisions on the matter. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Just a little tidbit that I can't resist, since many of you know that I am also a civil engineer, you can thank 47 years of your lifespan due to the work of civil engineers. Water and wastewater treatment improvements added more to your lifespan than the medical profession ever has.
Thank you, public works.
And that's really true, too. Okay, so the next item I have tonight is our Arinda Teen Advisory Council overview. So I see our Parks and Recreation Director, Todd Trimble. We're looking forward to seeing this, guys.
Good evening, Mayor G, council members. For the record, Todd Trimble, Parks and Recreation Director, and we're happy that we're able to see you tonight and give you a quick overview of another exciting year. It's kind of a custom here with the Arinda Teen Advisory Council. I want to introduce real fast Sheena. Most of you know Sheena Wellman Minor, who's our recreation supervisor, oversees all recreation programs and our covey of coordinators and our fantastic front office staff. One of those coordinators can be here, Matt Del Martini, oversees OTAC specifically along with, he works, he's working a lot of weekends right now with Arinda Youth Sports. So we had to give him a little bit of time off, but he also handles the Arinda, should probably know the Arinda Day Camp and Camp Arinda Junior. So he's, we're just talking to Councilmember Iverson. That is really gearing up now. So if there was a busier time than another, this is probably it for us. So, but real quickly, before I hand it over to Haley, and she'll introduce herself as this year's chair, we highlight a wide array of activities and events, not to, the least of which was the turnout we saw this year. I think Haley will touch on that. I think well over 20 regular members this year, which is a new record, a lot of new exciting events. And you'll see as she goes through here that we did with the number of events and different things that they participate in and really help provide the community. As you'll see, they've really got a good gist, I think, of some of the things that would it takes, at least in the park and rec field of municipalities and with, we have plans moving forward and hopefully as soon as next year, next year to even kind of broaden that exposure with a wider overall understanding of city government as a whole. But we'll talk more about that next year. But I'm going to introduce, and Haley will introduce herself too, but Haley Takashima, this year's OTAC chairperson.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Haley Takashima. I'm currently a junior at Akalani's. For the OTAC, they do have a requirement to live in the Moraga area, and I do. So just in case you were wondering why I'm part of the Arinda Teen Advisory Council, but I do go to school at Akalani's. Yeah, and this will be my seventh year being a part of OTAC, and it's an amazing opportunity I had. I started in middle school and it was one of the most rewarding things I did. I got to meet so many new people and really help the community out. And so here are the OTAC officers. So I am currently the chairperson. Cole Sassen, the vice chairperson, as well as Matthew. Then we have Ava as our secretary and George as our, as our marketing and public relations officer. And then here are just, it's a quick rundown of some of the council members we have. There is an abundance during all of our meetings. Here's another. Okay. And so then we have our annual OTAC events, while I'm well assured that you've heard of, one of them being the Winter Fest, which we participated in for our, for the second annual Winter Fest. And OTAC hosted the Arts and Crafts Room where we offered paper snowflake making, olive hat decorating, and the making of the Star of David, just so we're inclusive of all December or winter holidays. And then we have our kids' night, three kids' night, kids' night outs, which for each kids' night out, it's, there's around 35 to 40 participants per kids' night out. And the OTAC members come and volunteer their night from six to nine to help watch the kids and just to help them with their arts and crafts or just to facilitate play. And so this year, we watched The Grinch, Shrek, and Inside Out. Yeah, and then alongside our, watching the movie and having them have a pizza dinner, we provided arts and crafts such as snowflake making, Valentine picture frame decorating, and tissue flower making. And then as for our Red Cross Blood Drive, this will be our third year partnering with them. And for this year, we had 26 donors. The turnout was great and it lasted from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. And then lastly, we have our Arinda Action Day. So each year, OTAC participates in the, in the Arinda Action Day and helps clean up debris from the Camino Pablo bike paths to the community center in Wagner Ranch. Yeah. And then we have our new events, or here's some photos of the events of various kids' night outs, the blood drive, or just us helping out with the Winter Fest. And then this year, we decided to do something new, which is work with the Moraga Youth Involvement Committee in Moraga, which is the Campo Lindo School District. And so what we did was we partnered for a pickleball tournament and it was hosted in the Arinda Community Park tennis ball slash pickleball courts. There are 27 doubles teams, which means 54 players. Only one team did not show up, so I would say that the turnout was really good. The registration was run for about two weeks and the event ran from 12:00 PM to 3:00 PM, predicted along the allotted time period. Students were invited from Miramonte, Campo, and Akalani's to participate to get all three school districts. We couldn't get Los Lomas unfortunately, but we hope to next year. And the prizes were given to first through fourth place. We were able to give these prizes through the Moraga Youth Involvement Committee for them reaching out to their local businesses and asking for gift cards. And a lot of businesses were very reluctant and was willing to give us some gift cards. So for first place, we have two $40 Tangelo gift cards and one Canyon Club $25 gift card. For Tangelo, it's like a frozen ice cream place, and for Canyon Club, it's like a pizza place. For second place, we have one $50 Canyon Club. For third place, we have two $20 Tangelo gift cards. And for fourth place, we have one coupon for an extra large pizza at Panini's. Okay, and here are some photos of the pickleball tournament. A lot of teams were very in the spirit and decided to dress up, which was very unexpected, but is really fun to see. Yeah. And then for some future OTAC plans, OTAC is planning to have and, to plan new events every school year and to come up with new ideas. And we hope to continue the partnership with the Moraga Youth Involvement Committee to make the pickleball tournament an annual event. We would also like to partner them with something like the Battle of the Bands. That is something that has been talked through since my first year being at OTAC to now. And so I'm hoping that next year, since we have a partnership with the Moraga Youth Involvement Committee now, that we are able to form that bond and to create and to promote what, an amazing event and to promote like a cause that's happening during that time period. OTAC also hopes to continue to provide future opportunities and recognize for, and be recognized for our local, for our local leaders, and thank you for allowing OTAC to present.
Wonderful. Haley, thank you so much. It's so nice to have you here with us tonight. Stay put for a second because I'm going to ask my colleagues if anyone has any questions for you.
No questions, but I will tell you that even if you got 54 pickleball people to sign up, based on the number of texts that I got from high school and middle school parents, you will get more next year. So I'm really, really pleased with some of the innovations and seeing the group grow. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments for Haley?
I just want to say, I saw the craft room at Winter Fest and I've heard from kids and, I mean, I've heard from parents and their children how much they really appreciate and value the kids' nights out. And everything, everything you're doing is innovative and just adds so much to our community. The blood drive, the cleanup, can't wait to attend the Battle of the Bands if you let us in. And thank you so much for everything you're doing and for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Haley. Wonderful update and thank you to Todd Trimble and Sheena for continuing to make this a good part of our Parks and Recreation opportunities. So we really appreciate it and thank you so much. We loved hearing about all your activities and really do appreciate them. Okay, the next item on our agenda, I think our speaker is running late. Yes, I don't, I don't see her, so I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to go back to her when she does arrive, but I'm going to go ahead and open the public forum. This is an opportunity, as most of you know, to speak on items that are not on our agenda tonight, or if you want to speak on an item that is, because you can't stay any longer, that is acceptable too, and we'll love to hear from you. I'm going to go ahead and, since I am guessing I know the topic of most of these cards except one, I'm going to go ahead and invite our sister community next door in his day job. Carrie Hillis is here. For those of you who don't know Carrie, he is on the Moraga Town Council and, but his day job is with BART, and I'm guessing he is here to give us an update on some things that are coming up.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor G, members of the council. My name is Carrie Hillis. I'm the BART Government and Community Relations Representative for Central Contra Costa and Santa Clara Counties. Beginning in late June, BART will begin a project to replace 16 interlockings between MacArthur Station and 19th Street Station in Oakland. During construction, which will occur on irregular weekends throughout 2024, a free bus bridge will replace BART service between Rockridge, MacArthur, and 19th Street Stations. The current interlockings, which operate like interchanges between tracks, are more than 50 years old and in need of replacement. Riders can expect delays of up to 40 minutes between these stations and less frequent service system-wide on work weekends. Work will occur between MacArthur and 19th Street BART stations one weekend a month, most months, through June 2026. The construction weekends for 2024 are as follows. June 22nd through 23rd, July 20th through 21st, August 17th through 18th, September 21st through 22nd, October 29th through, October 19th through 20th, November 2nd through 3rd. This is the largest project to rebuild BART's infrastructure funded by Measure RR, the bonds passed by voters in 2016. BART knows this will be very disruptive to our riders, and we would like to thank our riders in the Bay Area for their flexibility. For more information and the list of weekends that I just provided, the council can refer to the email I sent to you all yesterday, and members of the public can go to bart.gov/news. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Well, it's a good reminder, I guess, for Public Works Week that public works has to be maintained. So we appreciate the information and we'll make sure that we include it in our community newsletter information. Thanks for coming. All right, seeing that Candace is still not been able to make it here, I'm going to go ahead and start with our other speakers. So I don't know if there's any particular order that you all wanted to speak in, doesn't matter, okay? Kathy, would you like to go first?
Mayor G and city council members. I'm Kathy Barrett, and I've lived in Arinda for more than 40 years. Wonderful time here. But today I wanted to tell you about a beautiful little woodland that's enriched with streams and ponds and wildlife. And for the last 20 years, members of the Aloneye community have been gathering for our olive festivals and Earth Day festivals under the leadership of elder, Cherokee Elder Chester Minor, to drum, dance, sing, and bless the land. For more than 70 years, more than 15,000 Arinda children have gone through the Native American Studies Program under, under the guidance of naturalist Torres Jaeger. The Wagner Ranch Nature Area is an important site for the Aloneye people and the historic home of the first Surveyor General of California, Theodore Wagner. For years, the Arinda Historical Society and the City Landmark Committee have proposed that the Wagner Ranch Nature Area be, be turned into an historic site, but those proposals have always been turned down by the Arinda Unified School District, which has not, has not wanted restrictions on its property use. It's distressing to report that for the past 15 months, the nature area has been closed due to the 2023 storms that caused a lot of trees to fall. Facilitated by Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kahn, a $1.5 million grant was awarded to the Arinda Union School District around October last year for mitigating the hazards in the nature area. Despite the pleas from students and adults, the district has still not decided if it will accept the grant. A student from Miramonee put a change.org petition up, save the Wagner Ranch Nature Area, and within a few days, it had hundreds of signatures, and tonight it has more than 1,000. There are also petitions circulating in the community, and hundreds were turned in at the district's school board meeting on May 6th, and the petition is still going. The delay in accepting these funds for repairing and maintaining the nature area remains a mystery to the majority of Arinda citizens who support the reopening and protection of this historically and ecologically unique treasure for the students and the greater community. I am hoping that the very talented and dedicated Arinda, the Arinda City Council can facilitate the acceptance of these funds to reopen the nature area, which in the district has been, the district has designated as its sixth campus. Thank you for considering our plea for help. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, Steve or Bill, which whoever wants to go first, I have cards from both of you.
Oh, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm William Hudson. I've been in Arinda for about 40 years. Of course, the Arinda Union School District owns the nature area, and so the city's not directly involved, but it's part of the fabric of our life here and an important asset to the community in the same way that the ball fields are and the schools themselves are. So I'm here to make, make, to tell you the situation and ask for your help however you can give it. I think you know, but let me briefly tell you that the nature area is a location of 50 years of outstanding school programs, cultural programs, environmental and cultural programs for our students. This is a high point of their education. The focus of numerous organized and individual volunteer efforts, including Boy Scout Eagle and Girl Scout Gold Projects, and the site of popular festivals in which the public can come in, learn some of the local culture and background, and just enjoy the ambience there. 15 months ago, the storms created safety hazards- Now, 15 months ago, the storms created safety hazards from fallen trees and undercut paths which closes the school, which closed the area for safety reasons. The school doesn't have operating funds to reopen it, but our Assembly Member Rebecca Bauer-Kahin got a million and a half dollars grant that would not only remedy the situation and allow it to reopen, but would also add some long-needed infrastructure such as bathrooms, which we've never had, and also some funds for a professional educator. We're very worried that this money will only last as long as the current fiscal year, which ends June 30. Without the grant, it's not clear that the nature area could be reopened and the classes provided to the students, and if this does not happen immediately, we're, I'm afraid it never will. The program's already becoming a memory. Since the COVID, we're just realizing that the nature programs have been only offered for four months. So we have students, lots of students going into OIS, which have had brief, if any at all, exposure to the nature area. The grant's been available for months, but for some reason it's not been completed, apparently due to uncertainty over the terms that might accompany it. This is a situation I wanted you to know, and I would like whatever help you can offer to provide, informal or formal, so that the money gets to the district. The nature has been a source of involvement and pride for the community for years. For the past 15 years, it's been sort of an informal relationship because the programs have been offered and the maintenance done by the Friends of the Nature Area. With this, with these funds, it would become an official part of the school district again. We, we can't, we can't offer the programs in the same way that we used to because of employment laws. With this grant, it would be, it would become an official part of the district and can begin to realize its full potential. Teachers will be, can commit resources developing full programs in the nature area because it will be there forever. Their classes, as shown by a recent high school science trip, students can continue going to the nature area and learning things there past the elementary school grades, and public festivals and so forth can resume. There's a tremendous demand for volunteer opportunity. We have organizations perpetually asking us what can they can do. So we're sort of at a cusp. The nature area can either become a memory or with this money become even more of a crown jewel for Arinda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Hello, I'm Steve Danziger, a member of the Board of the Friends of the Nature Area. I've lived in Arinda for 29 years. We had a large group that was going to come to the two-by-two city school board meeting last week, but it was canceled. So that's kind of why we're here today, just to bring it to your attention what's been going on there. I know you've received emails, and I'm sure all of you know what's happening, but at the first school board meeting in May, we had a large group there, and the superintendent had recommended to the board to reject the funds. The board did not approve that. They directed their council to work with council from the state, mostly from, through Rebecca Bauer-Kahin, to try to work out an agreement. So hopefully, they're working on that. The problem is, we haven't heard very much. We keep trying to find out from either the assemblywoman, assembly member, or the school district, you know, what's going on to get these funds, and we were just kind of kept in the, in the dark about it. So there's, you know, thousands of students that are not having the opportunity. It was closed for COVID, and now it's been closed for 15 more months. We have, you know, people who are ready to do the volunteer work, and we have community members that are ready to donate to the Friends of the Nature Area for the upkeep and maintenance, but at this point, they're just kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with this grant. People don't want to give, give funds at this point until they see that the school district could approve the, accept the 1.5 million. According to the information we have on the grant, they need to do this by the end of this year to encumber the money to be able to use it. If they don't do it by the end of the year, we're going to lose the money, and with the state of the state budget, you know, it's all up in the air. We don't know what's really going to happen if, if the governor might in fact take the money back. So we're hoping this gets done as soon as possible, and we're just asking for you, when you do have the two-by-two, when you have the opportunity to talk to school district superintendent or board members, to please advocate for us and get that area open, which is a treasure of Arinda and really needs to be open again. And thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Let's see, I have one other speaker card, but I think it was maybe a repeat of, of yours, Bill, so, okay. So I don't have any other bills that want to speak, right? Oh, okay, Bill, come on down. I'm sorry.
So two weeks ago, you put forth a proclamation declaring May as Jewish-American Heritage Month, and I'm here before you tonight to request that you declare July as Christian Heritage Month. Since its founding, the United States has been a majority-Christian nation, and that still holds true today. Now, it's easy to forget who the millions murdered under communism were, especially those after the Bolshevik Revolution. Now, we must ask, who is behind Bolshevism? I'll give you a hint, it wasn't Christians. Stephen Wise once said, "Some may call it communism, but I call it what it is, Judaism." Karl Marx was born Moses Mordecai Levy, and Leon Trotsky was born Lev Bronstein. I have to admit that coming here and asking for a Christian Heritage Month is pointless, as any legislative body that considers such a proclamation is met with forceful pushback by Jews. They kvetch relentlessly, shouting antisemitism until they successfully shut it down. The Jewish Talmud, which can be found in every synagogue across the world, is quite clear in its opinion on us Gentiles. Baba Metziah 114B, "The Gentiles are not humans, they are beasts." Yehudimoth 98A, "All Gentile children are animals." Sanhedrin 57A, "Where do Jews steals from a Gentile, he may keep." And Gittin 57A, "Jesus Christ is in hell being boiled in the hot excrement." Instead of a heritage month for any group, I'm calling on the city council to put forth a resolution committing to an honoring and upholding our First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. Recently, the House passed the so-called Anti-Semitism Awareness Act, which adopts private organizations' definition of antisemitism into law. Unfortunately, the truth is antisemitic. In 1998, Fred Loyer published a report debunking the myth of gas chambers and zycomby once and for all. There are no lampshades or soap, and many supposed survivors of the hollow hoax have admitted to fabricating their stories. I could go on all night sharing shocking facts, but I encourage you to do the research for yourselves. Please visit gtvflowers.com and goymtv.com to learn the truth. I'll leave you with one more piece of information. The Jewish practice of matizabapeh, or direct oral suctioning, is when a moral uses his mouth to suck the blood from the circumcision wound of an eight-day-old infant. It's practiced daily all over this nation, often giving these babies herpes, many of whom have died. The Goiam know it is time for us to work together to resist Jewish supremacy. Thank you, good night.
Okay, I don't have any other speaker cards. Is there anyone else from the public that wanted to speak tonight? Okay, I still don't see Candace, right?
And see if she fits in at some point.
Okay, so Steve is still here. I was going to turn to, to staff and our two-by-two. I think we all understand the situation with the nature area. We all understand that that's the school district's purview, but I just wanted to check, I'm not asking that we say anything, but I wanted to check whether staff or the two-by-two committee had any, any comment.
We have an update on each two-by-two agenda on the nature center, so it has been a topic of discussion at each two-by-two meeting. This meeting was canceled because we couldn't get a quorum, so.
Okay.
That would be my one request to the city clerk and city ma, or city manager, that we try to get that rescheduled, because I think with the summer, we tend to have a little bit lighter schedule with the two-by-two. But if we could proactively get something calendared, that would be a wonderful way to keep the momentum up.
Okay, so I think we, you know, we all heard, and so we'll, we'll go forward, but we certainly all understand, you know, how much the nature area means to the community. Okay, so that brings us, seeing no other public forum speakers, that brings us to the consent calendar. So I would ask my colleagues, is there any item on the consent calendar that anyone wants to pull tonight?
Can I just really quickly just ask staff really quickly? Was there, was there a moment for a brief statement? Was that?
Could I offer a brief explanation of how the public forum works and the First Amendment, if that would be useful?
I would like that.
Okay, so I just wanted to remind you that the public here, that I'm here with land management. The city is required to occupy time on, I think it means the public, I guess they're not on the agenda. And I think you just saw a handle, including the last speaker, who expressed some, he was using a computer. I also wanted to remind everybody that because those topics are not on the agenda, the council cannot discuss them, not just if you'd like to.
Is my audio not working? I'm sorry.
So can you begin again? I'm so sorry.
I'll begin again by saying that the state of California's open meeting law provides that on each agenda is an opportunity for the public to come speak on items that are not listed on the agenda. And that is the, we just finished hearing from five members of the public. And those comments made by the public are not subject to discussion by the council. It is a time for listening, not a time for deliberation, because the items are not on the agenda. The other thing worth noting is that we live in a country that has a constitutional right of free speech that we think of as our First Amendment rights, and that allows speakers to come and express viewpoints like the ones you heard without our ability to stop that speech. And so that is, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that that's what we just experienced. It's not something we experience often here in Arinda. We're lucky to have a very civil discourse, a very fact-based discourse, and I think we just experienced something unusual for us. And I wanted to take a moment to say that it was shocking to me. I suspect it was shocking to others, and that is sort of, that's what I have to say about the procedures that are relevant.
Madam Mayor, I just clarify that I believe that we are speaking, as far as the shocking comments were, related to the last speaker. Thank you, just for the record.
I think, I guess I would like to ask you, as our city attorney, I was, I was listening carefully, but I did not feel that I had the ability to stop.
I agree completely.
Okay.
And the, we've talked about this before in the context of the Zoom bombing, for example. Members of the public who come to speak have a First Amendment right to say things, even if they are not factual, even if they are distasteful, even if they are antisemitic. This is a public forum for that. They have permitted to do that. There are limits, and I agree, this evening, the speaker did not breach those limits. And so there wasn't the ability for the council to prohibit the speech that we heard. It doesn't make it any less shocking or concerning or disturbing, but it is, you know, I think it's a, it's a somber moment for us here.
Yeah, I think it's very out of character for Arinda. It's a shame, but I think it's also an example of why we absolutely wanted to put an end to remote access to be able to do that, at least in my opinion, and I'm only speaking as myself, not for the council, so. Okay, all right, so that brings us back to the consent calendar. Again, I'll ask, is there any item on the consent calendar that anyone wants to pull tonight?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor? Okay, that consent calendar passes unanimously. There is no public hearing on tonight's agenda, so that brings us to our policy matters, and the first is H1, which is our proposed mid-cycle budget adjustment. So I'll turn to our city manager to start.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As our Director of Administrative Services, Doug Alessio, makes his way up, we're happy to be presenting at least this evening an introduction for our mid-cycle budget adjustment. The council does adopt a two-year budget, so this is the, we're coming up with July 1st being the second year of the two-year budget. So as Doug will walk you through, these are usually just minor adjustments. It's not the normal, more robust process with decision packages and budget referrals. So with that, I'll turn over to Doug. We have a very few minor adjustments as we look into the next fiscal year, which is good for us in comparison to perhaps the state of California, just as one example, so.
Good evening, council. I'm Doug Alessio, your administrative services director. David basically explained most of this. This is just a mid-cycle adjustment, basically minor refinements or the ability to make a major change if some external factor or change in environment like COVID had occurred. We might be making bigger changes. So very minor adjustments this year. Our police services contract, I maybe was a little overzealous in how I budgeted it, and it looks like an adjustment, it will be necessary for next year of about $265,000. And then our animal control services contract is going up by about $15,000. So $280,000 in the general fund, those are the proposed adjustments. The bright side to that is our property tax is coming in very strong this year, so I'm offsetting that $280,000 with a change in my projection and property tax by about $305,000. And then the only other adjustment I'm proposing is for the fuel, fire fuel incentive program. You guys had authorized a $400,000 pilot amount to date. We've spent about $60,000, and there's no budget in next year, and since you just recently changed the guidelines, my assumption is you'd like to see some money available, so I'm just proposing rolling that budget from this year to next, so $340,000 in Measure R for fire fuel reduction incentives. Those are the only proposed adjustments on the operating side, and I know that Scott will be up next to talk about CIP. So if you have any questions or comments, I'm available.
Just to note, it is a two-step process, so we're sort of sharing with you our recommended changes, and then these will come back at your second only meeting in June for adoption of the mid-year adjustments, or the mid-cycle adjustments, I should say. So no action this evening, but it's our chance to preview what we're going to be asking you to do in June.
I'll turn to my colleagues. Are there any questions? Questions? Yes, Councilmember Riley.
I'm going to want to say something about the mini park. I don't know if that's with this item or the next.
It's the next item, but can you make sure you're?
Say it again or just leave it?
Yeah.
Let it go.
Why don't you say it again?
Okay. I wanted to ask a question about the mini park, and I don't know if I should do that with this item or wait for the next one.
I'll be more appropriate in the CIP discussion for the mini park.
Thanks.
No other questions? I have a question for you, and I hate to ask it. I don't want to be part of, what is it I read in the media? I don't want to be part of the doom loop, but I am curious whether you have, your city staff have seen anything yet. As we all know, the number one topic of the last, you know, two months we've been dealing with is the issues related to homeowners insurance, and many of us that are spending a great deal of time paying attention to that are also very worried about what that means to our real estate market and by, you know, the next step over our property taxes. Has there been anything that you have seen at all yet from any source that's showing what the real estate market may be doing or not doing?
I think it's too early to tell. And definitely too early to budget. Property tax revenue is definitely a lagging indicator. What will happen will unfold in, in, before it affects our finances for a good year and a half. So we'll, as we're doing projections in the future, depending on what happens, we'll be able to incorporate, but it, property tax in its nature will take quite some time to adjust. So it's, one of the nice things about it being our biggest revenue source is it's pretty stable, and even with something like that, it will take some time for it to hit us, and it's way too early to tell what that. And it's way too early to tell what that may or may not be.
And hopefully it's not much of anything in the end, so.
Well, and perhaps not, but again, we'll see. Matter of fact, we'll hear later, we are having a town hall on next week, the 29th. Deputy Commissioner from the Insurance Commission's staff is going to be here. Will be in this room at 6:00 PM on the 29th. They'll have this town hall. But, you know, those non-renewals are just now starting to come into effect in June and later, I think, for folks. So we'll see. You'll hear more about that at the town hall. I just want to note too, and if people are interested certainly in, with this staff report on the city's website is the more detailed mid-cycle budget update, which has a lot of information. So people in the council, of course, can, has had that. But the, the nice thing about Arinda, I will say, and it predates my tenure, but the nice thing about being your city manager here is the council and the staff have always been fairly conservative when it comes to budgeting. So the good news is we have healthy reserves. We have a general fund reserve equal to half of our general fund, which is a little over $16 million. So the nice thing is we're equipped to navigate almost any change in circumstances by adapting over a couple of years, right? So this council has always set aside money for those types of purposes so that we, in comparison to some other communities, we're more easily able to navigate changes. And even if we saw something, it wouldn't be that dramatic initially. We'd have to adjust on a longer-term basis, but that's the nice thing about having healthy reserves is we have maneuverability. So I want to applaud the council and the community for always being vested in that being our approach to budgeting, so.
And you made a very excellent point, Mr. City Manager. The report is, is very, very nice. Thank you. It's very well done. I appreciated being able to read it. So we do appreciate that from staff. So thank you for your thoughts there, and hopefully things will begin to turn the other direction before there's any impact. So I'll turn to the public and ask if there's any members of the public that want to speak on this item. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, I will close public comment. I'll bring it back to my colleagues to see if there's any other comments. There's no action we're taking tonight, so we're, we're good for this item.
I just wanted to thank Director Alessio and the, and staff for a very, a very comprehensive report that I did find useful. And I would encourage any members of the public that want more information to, to go read. Which I think is available on our website.
It is available on our website.
Meeting materials attached to today's meeting, correct?
It is, and it's also on the departmental site for, in the finance department, you can find it, direct link to it, too.
Thank you. Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that, that was really nice to, when looking at the agenda online, to be able to click on the agenda report. At the end of the report, the attachment actually is a hyperlink to the document. And I think that makes it really easy for the public to find as well as the council members. So that was really helpful, and thank you for all the hard work.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to item H2, which is similar. It's our proposed update to the capital improvement plan, mid-cycle budget review. So I see our public works director coming back up. Mr. City Manager, did you have a comment?
No, I'm in at this time, just allow, but very similar topic, just the mid-cycle update. There's some changes being recommended in our public works director. Scott Christie will walk you through those.
Good evening, city council. And in tune with what Mr. Alessio pointed out, this is the mid-cycle update. So we're not doing a full presentation with all the nuts and bolts of the capital improvement program. In summary, though, just to give you a little background, in our department, we use this software, it's called Plan It, to help us map out future projects over a five-forward year period. And so with that, we're able to make current forecasts, look at the impact on the fund balances and so forth. And then also we pay attention to sort of the flavor of the money in terms of limitations on, can we only spend it on roads and drainage? Or gas tax would have that sort of limitation and so forth. And same with facilities in terms of some of the park and rec facilities, they certainly have limitations on where they can spend. So we do coordinate with parks and rec with Mr. Trimble, and quite closely with finance, with the administrative services department in terms of making sure that our fund balances jive with what they have on their official budget records. In the staff report, I do briefly cover some of the updates we've made. So we look at things like, what are some of our bigger projects? And are they on budget or over budget or under budget and things like that? And so we make adjustments if we're nearing the end of a project or we have the bids and have higher confidence. In some cases, we can actually reduce the planned expenditures and thereby reduce the fund demand, so to speak. So for example, on this large covert project, these are the double box coverts that go parallel to Arindaway, starting at the Safeway parking lot. We had a pretty large budget initially because there were a lot of unknowns. But through the design process, and then after we got what we think were some pretty competitive bids, we're now comfortable with the bids, the low bid amount plus a contingency that we could take out some of the future funding from that project. So that does free up some money, and you'll see some of the fund balances therefore a little higher than we initially planned. Now, in some other cases, we're making some increases because of the current bid environment, inflation, so to speak, and some things like that. So I've outlined this in the report. I won't really go into that detail here. And then there's cases where, in particular, we're trying to close out Fund 105, which is the original measure L, I believe, add-on sales tax. So just to clean up the books, we're showing some transfers here amounting to, I think it's around $900,000. We're going to reclassify some current year expenditures into Fund 105. That way administrative services can close that out. And the auditors, and we'll know that be happier, too, to have that completed. Then with respect to some new projects, that's another opportunity at this point in time to look at some projects that are on tap for consideration. Now, I list five here. The library auditorium lighting, now that's a relatively small one. But some of the bigger ones, certainly the dog park, the pickleball courts. We're showing here some initial funding from the standpoint of doing preliminary engineering. As that work develops, which is in progress now, we'll come back with a more detailed cost estimate on what those projects will consider, what they're estimated at. And then that'll be for council consideration at that point to appropriate money for that purpose. Also, the city hall HVAC upgrade, that's, we've had issues with that. It's nearing the end of its useful life, so that's why we're including that on the current list. And then this fifth one, the Glorieta pedestrian pathway phase two project, that one, we have been successful at passing the initial stages of getting the TDA grant for that. So we're including that in the budget update. And then for the so-called unfunded project lists, we're showing that the first item is this, actually, it's upgrading. It's been on the unfunded list, that first project for the library auditorium lighting upgrade. And then we're adding two new projects, city hall flooring replacement, again, it's at the end of its useful life. And then a new crosswalk on Arindaway's Drive at the north intersection of Iron Bark Circle. We've had some requests for that, so we're just putting it in there as kind of a placeholder that we can draw from if there's increased demand or grant opportunities, things like that. And then in the staff report, there are details of those projects, just brief summaries. Then also I've included, and we can discuss that if you like, the projects by category. So it's basically a listing that shows all the projects in the current CIP, including these new proposed ones. And then the same information, but in a slightly different format that shows individual funds and which projects we're drawing from for those. And then the biggest piece of information is the sources and uses of, by fund. And that shows the actual fund and all the projects that we're using that fund for, plus some operating expenses that we utilize for that purpose. So that's what's in your package, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. One last thing is just the next step. Again, we do this in parallel with, with finance in terms of bringing this back then for final adoption at the June 18th meeting. One different thing with the CIP is that for the new projects, we do need to get the planning commission to review that for conformance with the general plan. So that's planned at the June 11th meeting. So that would then be just prior to coming back to city council for adoption of the CIP update.
Madam Mayor, if I could just real quick too, we should have mentioned it on the prior presentation. The same thing also applies to the Finance Advisory Committee and the Supplemental Sales Tax Oversight Commission. Because you're reviewing the budget at this meeting instead of your first meeting in June, which isn't taking place. They'll be reviewing it at their normal June meetings, and so we will have their reports for you when we bring it back in June. So just, we should have mentioned that in the prior presentation as well.
Can I ask you, before I ask questions, since I think there probably is already one, Scott, is, did you want to say anything else about your additional item on the mini park?
So for the mini park, to date, we've spent, again, and I did provide that in the late communications. The mini park to date has expended, I believe it's about $80,000 in prior years on design and other activities. And also a fair amount, say $25,000 on upgrading the fountain or repairing it so it was working. So it's now working and doing some sidewalk work and some landscaping upgrades, not a complete overhaul like the original plan intended. So the work that was done by the consultant, which was Gates and Associates, called for a whole new landscaping, signage. And a project that we're now estimating might cost on the order of $300 and some thousand dollars. So with the information we had that the community foundation was going to have to reduce their funding down to $50,000, what we did, as I explained in the communication, was reduce the funding amount that's available then with that $50,000 and what we had already budgeted from park dedication fees. Brought that down to, I think it's, I'd have to look here, but we brought it down to that amount and then limited it to that. So, you know, what I'm showing here being, yeah, $110,000 for next year, we spent no money in the current fiscal year. The $110,000, that would be enough really for a limited scope. So that's really what's before council is some direction as to, do you want to limit it to this money available? Or would you be interested then in expanding it and looking at new funding sources to this original design that Gates and Associates did? The other piece of information is the signage, I know has been changed over time. And I believe the community foundation is interested in the signage. So it would appear their $50,000 donation is really subject to making sure that that signage is included.
And if I could add, so, yes, so with the recommendation, the CIP is to reduce the project from the complete scope to match the available funds. Because we did have the funding that was withdrawn by the foundation. However, I would like to note that Todd and I had met maybe, maybe about two, two months ago, maybe a little bit less, with representatives of the Arinda Garden Club, who just this week, I think it was last, towards the end of last week, confirmed they have an interest in maybe being a funding partner on this. That's still going through their system, but, you know, they may be able to close, well, they think maybe about $100,000 perhaps of the gap. But that still would leave the overall project, which was a combination of enhanced landscaping, reworking of sidewalks, and installation of a new, I'll call it an entryway sign, which has been a big, great interest, of course, to our Art and Public Places Committee. So there's the $50,000 just to install the sign, but that would have to be either removed or relocated if we eventually did proceed with the approved redesign of the park. So, you know, that is where our hope is that between the garden club, which has stepped up, and maybe some others, we can close that funding gap or we can continue to look for grant funds to do that unless the council would like to close the balance of that gap for another source.
Can I ask a question? Just because this has gone on so long, I have completely lost track at this point. Did we ever conclude an actual design that was final and approved? And the only thing that's on the table is, do we have enough money for it? Or are there still question marks as to what the design is possibly?
No, my understanding is the design is completely approved, and it was probably the delay in actually getting to construction that contributed to the community foundation withdrawing their funds. So, you know, Todd can come up and respond, but I think even, this is one of those long-delayed capital improvement projects that is, in part, subject of one of your upcoming items is reorganizing how we do facilities and capital projects as it relates to parks and rec, so. But Todd can give you more of an update, but yes, I think even before I arrived, there was a final design approved that we got also approved by PG&E, which was problematic because they.
Yes, I remember that part.
The most painful parts usually you do remember pretty, pretty, quite often.
I think that's accurate. Yeah, this was a project that was in place when I started as well. And we did go through a conceptual design, some delay with the lease with PG&E, and then having to do some modifications. I think what is, and then there was, in the interim, we spent some, I think about $25,000 of that 75 or 80 to, to kind of redo, had kind of gotten disrepaired. So we had our landscape contracts spruce it up and not nearly that. We did get the fountain running again, but that was, that was pretty relatively nominal cost. But I think that the, some of the consensus with the Park and Rec Commission and the APPC was that the park landscaping and hardscape was, was, you know, was okay and can potentially use kind of a, maybe a bit of an overhaul, but the focus kind of shifted to the gateway sign. And in the original conceptual design, it was very modest. I think there was $10,000 budgeted for it in the Gates design, small and placed on the corner. So more recently, those two bodies have, have had an interest in a more, a larger, more robust sign, put a little bit further back in the park. And that's been their focus to focus on that aspect and kind of, and then with the hardscape and landscape kind of, kind of maybe spruce it up, but not necessarily the entire original conceptual design.
At this point, if, through whatever mechanism, if the funding were to be identified as, yes, this is enough to cover, are we ready to go? Is there something that's ready to be bid to be built?
Well, yeah, it depends on to the extent that we wanted to go through that. If we wanted to do, certainly we have a design that shows some, so maybe some, a little bit of outdated costs for complete replacement of hardscape, right? Or completely replacement of irrigation and landscape, which we could certainly do all or a portion of that. What has kind of changed is, I think, the, the scope of the, of the gate, whatever we call it, the gateway, the entry sign, which has been an important aspect of those two bodies. That, that cost is, I would say, increased because they're looking at a little bit of a more robust item there. And that's, I know that David mentioned is, and Scott too, that is maybe more of the current focus of the community foundation with their funding, so.
And was there ever a final selection, Todd?
Not a selection for the sign. So that is, even way back, there wasn't even hardly a start of that aspect. And it was almost going to be kind of a secondary project, remember, we'll see, but we talked about that too, but that has since. Remember, we talked about that too, but that has since risen to the forefront with certainly some designs in place and some estimated costs, this is some design ideas. So those are, those are close, I would say. I don't think it would be much to get a kind of an updated cost for that, and then whatever kind of supplemental work or effort would be done, depending on what we decide with the landscaping. So I know there's one kind of overarching interest in those two bodies was to, if there was to be funding spent on the hardscape and landscape, the interest was to, and you might remember from the original design where, right now, there's two walkways through the park from the corner, there's the sidewalk that goes along this, right along the street, Camino Pablo, heading towards Bard, and then there's the one that kind of meanders through the park coming from the fountain. The interest there would be to remove that sidewalk closest to the street, replace with landscaping that would ideally, with the commissions and APPC, where the entry sign would be located, and we'd have the one pathway through the center of the park. So maybe, you know, the additional cost for that, for that part of the project.
So this, for example, Madam Mayor, is where, you know, for your next meeting, if you'd like, we could bring back some more detailed information and refresh everyone's information on the designs that were approved. Because my understanding was that, you know, the council had wanted to see the totality of the park done, and as you hear Todd, the Parks and Rec Director describing, that sort of flipped in some entities, but that's not really been before the council. So that's why we haven't advanced it. And I had told the FPPC and the others that it would need to be considered in the context of the CIP update, because that's when you do look at other funding priorities, and, you know, this is something that, you know, when there was a gap left as far as funding, I want to compliment the Garden Club for being willing to step up. And part of their strategy was maybe if they did, maybe some of the others' funding groups in the community might also step up as sort of a match. So that's really not had a chance to gel yet, and that's something we can explore over the next 30 days or so when it comes back in June.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll turn, thank you very much, Directors. I'll turn to the council and see if there are any questions.
Did you have a question?
Most of my question has been answered, but I have a new one related to this. Isn't there a pretty good estimate that the sign costs around $50,000? And there's a pretty decent drawing, and everyone's pretty happy with it, at the Art and Public Places Committee?
Yeah, it's a significant size sign, but the idea or the conceptual design includes kind of the, we certainly have a rendering of it, an early rendering with mosaic tile background with the city colors, the letters in the front. The concern there was that the original sign and conceptual design showed a much smaller sign between the two signal poles right on the corner, which would really, in their minds, inhibit kind of the sites and really kind of being able to do so. Yes, there is-
Right, but right now, it's $50,000, that's the number they're throwing around, just so we all understand that. Thank you.
If, in addition to the sign, if there was a partnership with the Garden Club, what is, what would that be doing? Replacing all the existing vegetation? Because it's, I guess I'm a little confused what it is that that partnership would be doing.
I think it's a little bit of a moving target, I would say. So we probably had pretty close to having the project totally funded, barring the $200,000 reduction from the foundation, right? So, but I'm now hearing is maybe with some updated estimates and a higher cost of a sign, it might be more than, as you can see here, I think, what did you say, Scott? There's $110,000 funded and still available. So if you add another $100,000 or so from the Garden Club, you're at 220, give or take. That would not fund the totality of the project that was approved, given updated cost estimates. So, so could we, it's like everything we do, we've been meeting as well with the Parks and Rec Foundation about, we have an approved master plan for the community park that total build out is estimated to be three or $3 million or so. We only have a very small portion of that funded. And so we were talking with them about, we could do it in phases, which we are prepared to do, but if they were willing to help us, then we might be able to do it in fewer phases. So we're not sure they have the appetite for that, and that was part of our exercise with them as well, is are there any elements we could take out to reduce costs? But the interesting thing, a lot of the cost is when we touch this community park, we have to address some ADA requirements, which are pretty costly, you know? Not touching it, we don't have to do that. We touch it, then we have to do some regrading and other access points and things. So, you know, the council did approve an updated master plan after the Parks and Rec Commission had, working with the designer, landed on that, but the problem is, there is a funding gap. And so that's why we can always continue to work on things to reduce overall costs to try to match the project to available funds, but we may not be able to meet the expectations of what was in the approved designs.
I do think it would be helpful, when you come back in June, that we could see sort of a recap of the whole story.
I can say that in advance, too, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I have to admit, it's been such a long time that the various things have, it's hard for us, I think, to put it all together in one picture at this point.
I ask really quickly, one other thing about the mini park. In the description, it says PG&E will not allow congregation, no benches, et cetera. This doesn't need to be long, but just very briefly, why?
Boesure to the high voltage transmission lines above.
Why, and it's, that was, it's a good point to bring up, because it is a little unusual, and it's a park that's not really designed for people to hang out. It's more like you just look and you move on, and-
Okay, yeah, that was-
And if PG&E lands, so we're kind of subject to their rules in this case.
Are there any other, oops, last council member, Miller, are there any other questions from the council?
I have other questions about the CIP, but others may as well, so I don't want to hog.
No, I have a question, but if you have another question about the CIP, yeah, now's the time.
Okay, it's not about the mini park. So for, this is for the new projects that we're adding to the CIP. The Glorietta pedestrian pathway, Phase Two, is the grant award is $90,000, but the entire cost is 300, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're just, and do we think that there will be an additional grant for that, or is this sort of the same proportion of funding as the other pathways we've done? Or similar to?
It's pretty similar. TDA, usually you're lucky to get more than 100. We applied for like 150, and we got 90, so.
And then with regard to my other que, well, I don't know, do others want to, I don't want to hog. Okay, so with regard to the dog park and the pickleball courts, those estimates were engineer, preliminary engineering work only? Can you talk, is this sort of, I guess, where are those numbers coming from? Are they, are they still pretty rough, or do we really think?
Now, that's not the cost of preliminary engineering. The only thing that we're going to be doing is preliminary engineering in order to develop better numbers. I think the contract we awarded with the firm, which has been done and will be meeting next week, is $25,000. But the council only, again, this is, the reason we're adding this into the budget at the mid-year, the council added money at these amounts towards these projects without really any defined cost estimates, right? So that is what you asked us to bring back, and we're incorporating these now into CIP, because that wasn't part of the mid-year budget process. And then that's what you budgeted for the totality of the project, and we can't give you more defined estimates until we do the preliminary engineering. So how that's described might be a little bit misleading. Right now, we've got that, those dollars amount budgeted, that's not the cost to do the preliminary engineering. Once we're done with that, we'll bring back the estimated costs, the designs for council review, and we may or may not have enough money budgeted to actually implement the projects, but we'll know that after we do the preliminary engineering.
And the last question, there was a sort of park master plan. How do these projects fit in with that, and what's the status of that? Because I've forgotten.
Well, these aren't proposed for the community park. The pickleball is proposed to go out at Wilder, and then the dog park is proposed to go at Arinda Oaks. So that was the, when this first came up in regard to the budget, actually, it goes back further, these were the budget referrals made back in the budget adoption last June, was, and it had the Parks and Rec Commission look at sites. And so that finally came back to you, I want to say in January or February, and then when we did the mid-year budget adjustment in February or March, is when the council said, let's go ahead and add these to the CIP and move ahead with, now that we have these sites, go ahead and move forward with preliminary engineering.
I guess I was asking, it would be helpful when this comes back, well, that's more of a comment.
Okay. Are there questions from either on this side? I have one question, and I hope I can ask this, because I can't figure it out, or I can't figure out where it is, and it may not be in the CIP. And I'll have staff correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was in the era money that we got, that we devoted something like $200,000 of that to technology issues?
And that wouldn't be in the CIP. That's, that's in basically the operating budget, even though some of those might very well be not staff costs, but operating costs. You might recall what we did as part of the mid-year as well, because the rules changed with the ARPA funding, is we, Doug might be able to help me here, because we're such a small city, we were able just to make up revenue loss. So what we did is, because we wanted, we were afraid the feds were going to claw that money back, so we just brought that revenue into the general fund to make up for operating costs, and in the general fund, you still have designations for those projects.
I remember all of that. My question really is about technology, because I'm not sure I feel like some of the assessment got implemented, like the new email system and things that were important there. But when we're starting to talk about the lighting in this room or whatever, there is nothing, I think, on an ongoing basis that seems like it needs to be replaced more than our technology for the microphones and the equipment. And, I mean, every city council meeting is a, you know, a sort of a brute force attempt to make all of this stuff work. So my question is, is there any plan for updating, replacing that equipment?
Yeah, and our city clerk can advise about that. That information technology set aside wasn't for this kind of technology, that really comes out of facilities, but-
Okay, so then where is the hidden budget for replacing this technology?
Actually, I would consider this technology part of that money. And so you were going to, Sherry, I think, has a plan.
As you remember, we did have microphones that we tested out that we liked, and so we're, facilities, Steve and I, we're just talking today, I'm waiting for estimates, we have to get three. We have our estimate from the person who tested them out, and we're close to getting those hopefully in the next couple of meetings. So it's, even though it's slow, it's, it works.
So did we already budget to pay for that once we get it? That's what I've lost track of, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem. So at mid-year, we actually did exactly what David said, and transferred the money to the general fund, and then in this case, moved that money to the IT Internal Service Fund, where we have budget to facilitate things like that. The planning department's looking at new permit processing software, so we're looking at at least the migration to that, because I think they're going to get a service instead of licenses, paying for upgrades like that, and any other sort of technology tools to improve the way we do our work.
For example, Sherry is implementing a new agenda management system that we should go live in later this year. So we've already selected that vendor, and we're testing and developing the form. So there's a variety of things there, and so that really would, and I can ask Doug and Sherry to bring back, because it's really more of a budget question than a CIP question, but we can add that in, some additional updates on those key initiatives in the item that comes back in June.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could just kind of get the whole picture of that again, as well as maybe when our game plan is for maybe improving all of this equipment.
Microphones, is there anything else?
I don't know, is there anything else that needs to be fixed?
I think the lighting is-
Well, as I understand, the lighting came up in part, and maybe Todd can speak to it, but I think, as I understood, but you guys were sitting there as well, it's not so much the lights you use to see your reading material, but it's how you appear in the telecast, because there's not really direct lighting.
We definitely need to appear as good as possible.
Well, I wasn't going to say that, but that's why I understand that Parks and Rec proposed it, because they've heard some, some questions asked about whether it's working as well as it should, together with other technology. I mean, you know, the, not having a permanent council chambers and having to set up and take down every meeting is very labor intensive, and it takes a toll on the equipment and the connection. So you're absolutely right, it seems almost every meeting, something doesn't quite work.
And, you know, honestly, unless we had a dedicated place where everything's always set up, and we developed it state of the art, like some cities actually do have, we are continually, and we can improve the microphones, and we can improve the lighting, but the, you know, the situation that we're in is just not ideal, so.
Okay, that was just a question that came to my mind as I was reviewing all this. So any other council questions?
I was going to make this a comment, but if Mr. Lassoe doesn't mind staying. I just fundamentally don't understand the nature of, I call them allowances, I think, David just called it budget referrals, but I have expressed frustration several times in the past year, where I think we've created an earmark of funds, and the dog park and pickleball is the easiest one for me to use, where I can say, here's, you know, here's an allowance, we don't have the project defined yet, but then during the year, when it comes forward, the funds are earmarked, and then we will budget into that allowance. What I feel like has happened over and over is that we hear, oh, well, you have to wait till the next June, either mid-cycle or budget update. And I get very frustrated when I am told that nothing can happen until the next June, because somehow, what I think of as an earmark or an allowance, isn't. And I would love some help understanding how we can earmark funds for undefined projects. For example, a monumented sign, when you come into Arinda in that mini park, it would be lovely if we could say, we should have a really good sign, and let's set aside $50,000 for it, but we don't have a sign or design yet, we just want to create an allowance so that we can act quickly and decisively. And I feel like I've been stymied over and over when we think we've done that, and then I'm told we can't.
Is this in reference to IT or the park?
No, I mean, anything. It could be a dog park, it could be a pickleball park, it could be a monumented entry sign. How can we, any given June mid-cycle or budget cycle, properly earmark funds for undefined projects that we would like to make actionable during the next 12 months?
Actually, I think you do that, like this was a budget referral, dog park and pickleball. We did say it would have to come back and just be incorporated to CIP, but we did move forward with the steps necessary to do that. And so I think really we, I think really what I hear Councilman Iverson saying is, you know, our process in government sometimes does take a bit longer, but it's never a lack, when you set up the earmarks, we do budget those items, and we can spend money on them. I'm trying to think of an example where we haven't done that.
But when those projects came forward, we were told that we're just trying to select sites so that in June, we can allocate money, and we had a little-
But to the extent we needed more than what you allocated at that time.
So we could, so if we had allocated 250 last year, we could have spent all 250 during this year, or not?
No, because we couldn't possibly gotten it done in that timeframe, given the engineering-
That's not really the question I was asking.
Okay, yep. No, I mean, we have to do-
Doug, do you mind taking a pass at this? Because, do you understand the question I'm asking?
Well, I, so, I know this, as far as the $200,000 IT earmark, I'm actively spending that. You don't hear about the projects because they're not over $60,000. So I'm actively trying to upgrade all of- trying to upgrade all of our systems. We just changed every switch in our server room. And then we did a bunch of rewiring, because our rooms looked horrible, and in an emergency would create issues for us.
It was a theoretical question. It was not about project A, B, or C. The question is, if there was a new project, okay, let's make up a fake project. We're going to do a toddler park at Wilder. Okay, so we say there's no design, and, but we want to set aside $300,000, which we know won't build the whole thing, but it should get significant design and maybe some land. We don't know. And we would like for meaningful work to be done inside the next 12 months. Is a budget referral all you need? Because I feel like the couple of projects we thought we had done that on, I get told we have to wait for this event to like move it into the CIP budget. And if until it's in the CIP budget, we can't spend it.
I believe it. Both of those are already in the CIP budget. So
Now, the Dog Park and Pickleball was not added, but yeah. We did spend money on, on the project, including the site selection. And if we'd gone a little bit quicker, we would have been spending the design money. So there is an appropriation in the budget of that dollar amount for the Dog Park and Pickleball. So all we're doing is getting the, the CIP is catching up with the budget.
If I may, I think what you're asking, because I have the same question now, too, is a process question. So forget any existing projects. So suppose that we added, when we form our initial budget, right, this, we're going to say toddler center at Wilder, right? So that we're not confusing it with anything else. And there's an allocation of 300,000 for it. What, what, how, once an allocation is made, obviously, there's, there's, you know, staff time and things like that, that are restrictions on, but supposing we didn't have those restrictions, what's the process for that budget referral to become, to be implemented, to the extent the money covers implementation? Is that?
It just has to be balanced with other workload items. For example, does it displace the median's modification of the freeway? Or, so we do try to keep all the projects moving. Again, we had to go back to the planning, the Parks and Rec Commission to do the site selection, because the council didn't designate a site at the time you adopted the budget referral. And that did take longer than we would have liked, which most public processes do. But because then we couldn't start design until we knew what site they were going to be at.
The point is, if you, if we had gotten to work right away and picked a site within 60 days, could we have spent all 100, 250 of that budget referral before now?
No, because we don't have a design. That's really construction money rather than design.
Doug, do you understand the question I'm asking?
So I believe I do.
Could we have spent the money? This is a hypothetical. This is not asking about what actually happened.
Sure. So the two constraints are money and staff resources. So I, I don't believe that we have all the resources to do everything, staff-wise. So even if you allocate money to something, it has to get balanced into workload somewhere. So sometimes, we don't, can't do that. But we have taken steps. And I believe, last year, you guys allowed us to hire another engineer.
I'm not asking about priorities or time. This is a budget question. I just want to know.
I think, if I can interject, I think what Councilmember Iverson wants to know is, if you pretend that the staff time and all of that is not constrained in any way, shape, or form, she wants to know whether the authorization for the money is, can be spent.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
If it's over.
Yes. You authorized it to be spent, and it can be.
I just feel like multiple times this year, I was told we had to wait until the CIP process in June for X, Y, or Z, and it was frustrating. So I wanted to, at this juncture, clarify that if we make a budget referral, there is no budget process preventing it from being spent.
Right.
I'm really sorry that took so long.
It's called an appropriation. So once you give us the direction in the budget, that's called an appropriation. It's a legal authority to spend. And we can move forward. If there were no constraints, we could spend all that money. Then, minute we got to the limit, we should be back asking for more.
And can I just ask a clarifying process question on that, which is, however, there is a, if, if spending the money involves getting grants, then it's still subject to the RFP process, right? And if spending the money involves individual expenditures over 60,000, then it needs to come back to the council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
And for example, let's just say, using your, let's say, the toddler example at Wilder, if we went, if you budgeted 300,000, and you told us that was the top priority, and we went out and got three bids for pre-designed equipment, and we had the place for it to go, that could be done in a few months, right? That type of thing, or something that's, you know, very discreet like that. Unfortunately, a lot of these projects do have, you know, more complications associated with them. So I think that's actually, to hear this discussion, I think, is helpful, too. You know, we do this budget referral process. And one of the things I think we probably need to do to fine tune that is, maybe at that time, have a discussion about where the project might fit in the capital improvement program. Because what you do is usually, new projects get added in the fifth or sixth year out, because there are other projects that are queued up ahead of time. And just hearing the discussion, I think that's sort of a gap we might need to close and ask the council to revisit on that. Okay, here's the five-year CIP, which you'll have in front of you, and say, if you want to add these projects, normally, we would be adding them in the out years. If the expectation is they get done sooner, then we need to also make sure everyone's on the same page, that we're going to shift other projects out. And I think that's probably just what I'm hearing the discussion is maybe a gap we need to close in the budget referral process. Might be helpful to do that, too.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful. Okay, any other questions from city council? So thank you again, guys. I will then open it for public comment and see if there is any public comment on Agenda Item H2. Okay, seeing none. I'll bring it back to the council and see if we have any additional comments.
First of all, thank you. Thank you so much for the report. I thought the materials and the staff report were, were useful. I did not appreciate that the numbers were, I didn't quite appreciate that they were sort of in the, in the estimates and budget referrals, as opposed to actual, you know, I thought they were more refined spends or refined estimates. And I think in some cases, they are. In some cases, they aren't, right? And it depends how far along the process, the project is. It would be, you know, I think incredible to be able to have a better understanding of how the prioritization occurs. I think with capital improvement projects, we've gotten a great, sorry, with infrastructure that is along the lines of sort of road repair or drains, we've gotten the overall presentation about sort of, we have, you know, things that have been referred for this year and next year, and we've got this plan. With some of these other projects, I think, I think it would be nice to continue to revisit. We did a strategic planning workshop in the beginning of '23. And I don't know that there's been a, you know, we've come back to the priorities again, but in terms of using the Dog Park and Pickleball courts as examples, where those fit as prioritizing in the capital improvement project. And having that discussion would be helpful. The other discussion, I think, or just the information that would be helpful to me is sort of, where does it fit in terms of our overall plan? So the reason I was asking about the Parks and Rec master plan is we have, I like the categorization that you gave us, Director Christie, that was really helpful, because it shows, here's all the Parks and Recs programs together. And so where those fit in our overall master plan, you know, what the stakeholders in our community have said about that, because we have a lot of really amazing engaged stakeholders. That's sort of the transparency and information that would be helpful, I think. But thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. We're on comments now.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so I don't know that we finished talking about the mini park. We did all those questions and stuff, but I'm not sure we're done figuring this out. And I guess I'm assuming, if I assume that it's a $300,000 project, and we think we have about 210,000, and we need 90,000, so where's that going to come from? I wonder if we would be wise to think about funding that at this time in the mid-cycle and putting that extra 90 or $100,000 aside for this project. That I don't, I would like to know when it, when it began. I know, I heard it was decades long that we've had this mini park idea. Does anybody remember when it started? So
All I remember is it was my top priority to get it done when I first became mayor in 2020.
So it's been there. It's a long time coming. It's certainly not as, you know, trendy or as interesting as dogs and pickleball, but it's, it's the entrance to our city. You know, I mean, I really like those two ideas. But this is, this is like, where you, where, where are we when you come down that off-ramp? It's Bedmo Land, not Arinda. So it's where we're due. And I really would be very happy if we put another $100,000 from our funds there. If we get other, other groups in the community bring money forward, we'll take it. We won't spend the city's money. But I want it appropriated so that we can get the ball rolling.
I would just like to concur enthusiastically with that. I have citizens asking me all the time. They say, if you do one thing during your four-year term, get that ridiculous area sign handled.
As soon as I recall, I was going to do that.
So I just very much agree.
I guess, I guess that would be kind of our wrap-up comment, because City Manager offered to potentially bring it back. But I do think it would be, in terms of the budgeting, I think it would be very helpful to bring back, what would it take to actually deliver that project? It has been so long, and I recognize that there are a multitude of reasons why. But it would be extremely nice, I was driving by it again today, as one of the 300 times I went back and forth over here today, to remind myself that, just like Councilmember Riley said, it is intended to be a focal point of entry to the community. And while it doesn't look as bad as it did at some moments in the past, it doesn't look like what I think we wanted it to look like all these years. So it would be very nice to figure that out. So.
Here, if I may, I just, I just, just, I have a question about that. And just, I completely concur with everything that's said. And I'm just hoping that when we would get that, when that would come back to us, that we'd also see where that's coming from, right? So if, if there is this additional money that we're appropriating, it needs to come from somewhere. And so I think I heard in what you were suggesting to staff, is that staff would propose from where that money would come. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think at the end of last year, we had over $500,000 that we could go to to finish this park, finish that park, and finish this park.
That would reduce, you know,
What's available for something else.
Correct.
Yeah, but it's still sitting there. It hasn't been drained.
Though I will just say, that's your capital projects fund, and the idea was to use that mostly for design, to qualify for grants and match for grants. But the council did opt to do the Dog Park and other than that, because every so often, we do squirrel a little bit of money away for those purposes, because it's not an ongoing fund. So, but generally, you do have general fund reserves and undesigned reserves, if that's, if you'd like to use that as well. So, so we'll identify all those. And the CIP itself does include those items, would show you the park development impact fee fund, how much money it has, and a few other funding sources. So we'll come back with a menu of potential options for you. So.
Thank you.
That would be helpful, because we've heard, you know, there's, yeah, for those reasons. And also, just, this is kind of a new kind of time. In the past, we've been very, the past councils have been very much about building those reserves. And so now, as we're hearing kind of spending those down, it's important to just be cognizant, you know, to have a, kind of be cognizant of that, so that we build it back up at another time.
Right, right. I'm not saying be fiscally irresponsible. But I think this is a project that the city should actually fund entirely. This is not a community, it shouldn't be coming from the community. It should be our baby. But since it's not, and we're used to relying on the community foundation, I'm happy to see other community organizations step in and make it happen, because it's got to happen. It's been too long.
I think that wraps that up. Hearing nothing else on this particular item. I think we're good for tonight. We've given some direction and feedback. And I'm now going to take the opportunity, if it's acceptable to everyone, to bring our additional item for the good of the city. Candace Evans is here. She was not able to get here a little bit earlier. So I want to be gracious to her time. And thank you so much for making the effort to join us, Candace. We'd, we'd love to go ahead and hear your report. And very nice to see you.
Thank you. Very nice to see everyone. And hello, for those who do not know me. I am Candace Evans. I am the Secretary and Chair of Planning for the Advisory Council on Aging. And if you don't know the back history of the Advisory Council on Aging, we do have a PowerPoint. I'm just going to give a quick synopsis a little bit for it. Thank you. The Advisory Council on Aging is an engaged group of county residents. So each county has its residents for the city. We come together, we come together to improve the quality of older Americans in each city for, we're all going to get there. So when you get, we were allocated funds throughout the state, and which is the AAA, the EHSD, everybody pretty much knows that. And so those funds are given to like the low-income, high-income, or whatever the case may be, in each city. Our mission is to advocate for the programs and legislation. We play a huge part in legislation for insurance for the older Americans, the policies, the community we educate, for technology, the governmental organizations. We play advisory role for the supervisors, and anything else relevant to the older adults. We're split up in different workgroups. So every workgroup has their, their synopsis of, of what they focus on and report back to each city. So we have transportation, health, housing, legislative, technology, and elder abuse, which is a huge one right now, if you don't know the legislations that have been going on, and nutrition, which is another big one. In addition to the workgroups, the council members engage in a host of volunteer opportunities. So each city has their volunteers for that as well. We do focus groups on older and elder adults. We advocate our rights. If you get, I break it down in lowman terms. You're 80 years old, your kids are gone, or for whatever life brings your way, and you do need assistance for help, or you're getting, you're getting abused. And in whatever situation, we advocate for legislations, because that's what comes behind it. The, so I will keep going. The ACLU council members, opportunities and programs are vital to our older adults. My role, I've been at Arinda for five years. I used to love off snow, and now I love off a bait. The council, Arinda in 2020, I got represented. I think, I remember, I don't see that. And since then, I have been advocating for the city of Arinda for the older adults, suggesting programs. I sent your city clerk, Sheri, a lot of different PowerPoints. The master plan is a huge, huge part. That's very important, because you find out what legislations are going on. Insurance, whether you have a company or you work for a company on long terms, that's part of your plan. Retirement, that's part of that as well. We have lawyers on staff and on the board members, and we enhance your quality. Moving on to the next slide. In addition to, and I just introduced myself as such, I'm also the treasurer and the chair of the Planning Committee. The Planning Committee is vital, because we plan for what the AAA sends us for the budget. So we understand the budget that are being allocated per city, and how much money for, for whatever the reason or the case may be of, of each city. So moving on to the next one. My goals and objectives for Arinda is to focus on the, the Mills on Wheels cafes. We have, I've been getting a lot of emails regarding the Mills on Wheels Cafe. So it was a suggestion, and I'm bringing it to your attention as well now, arrange a resource for classes. I also have been getting a couple of emails about real estate class. I've also been getting a couple of emails about real estate classes and learning, hey, I'm 90 years old, I don't know what I want to do. I don't know much about real estate, it's very intricate. So these classes are very vital. You want to sell your home, you want to be in a small condo, you want to go somewhere where obviously it's easier for you to move around. We're not going to be here forever. So these are the things that we prepare for. We also have a lawyer, which is, one of my mentors is very good. We speak about wills. A lot of times, with laws and companies that change, people, you know, it's really hard for individuals to understand how to write a will, where to leave your money, estates. So we do advise on that as well. And last but not the least, the community garden for better food and recreation and sustainable living. Thank you. I'm going to open the floor for some questions. I have a lot to say, but I'm trying to be briefy, because it's very lengthy. The Advisory Council on Aging is so intricate. It's a lot of moving parts in the middle, because we do work with the county, and we are appointed by the Board of Supervisors for the county. So if you have questions, please feel free. If I can answer them now, if not, I'll be more than happy to send you what I can.
Thank you, Candace. Very interesting ideas, and we heard you express some of them, you know, during our interview process earlier. Is there any specific project, I know you're working with the council, but is there any specific project or program that you're trying to help see be done in Arinda? Other than, I recognize the garden has been on your list, but I was thinking of things either with our Park and Rec program and the classes, or is there something else specifically that you're formulating?
Yes, I think those were my main focus, because the master plan on aging is for... So if you don't know, the master plan on aging is what they use as a playbook to figure out where they're allocating the money and funds from, for those who know and don't know. So right now, my main focus is on the quality of life for the garden, the quality of life for writing wills and real estate estates, teaching family members how to. And every family member, it gets messy as you pass along, and so that's really important. Learning the real estate value behind what's going to happen when I leave here. We do offer those classes. There are quite a few real estate investors and brokers who are willing to do these classes for the older adults, focusing on slip and falls. Those are minor, but it's truly important, you know. As you get older, that's one of the most important. Also, the master plan on aging comes out every four years. So this is the last year, so now they're allocating new funds for the next four years. We have, we had a meeting, we meet every third Wednesday. So our last meeting was about where we're going to put the funds, and what we're going to be approved for. Some of the funds were taken back because of the state. Everybody's in a deficit, so it was, we got pulled. Of course, older Americans get the last of the least. And so I think it was, don't quote me on this, but I think it was 700,000 that got pulled, but it was pulled from the Nutrition Department, which is unfortunate, and that's why it brings me to the garden and sustainable living. Most of the funds went to the insurance base and the low-income. Some, you know, whether you own a company or with a company for a long time, your property taxes, your bills are due consistently. And so when you get to a certain age, you only have a certain amount of money you're allocated, obviously, in your personal funds. So that's where we come in, to say, okay, this is what we have available for you. And so that's important as well, is for others to know.
I'll ask my colleagues if there are questions for you.
I have a comment, but I'll wait.
Okay.
And if you have questions later on, you do have my email. Sherry and I go back and forth. We've been going back and forth for years. But I have been a representative for, going on, what, five years now? So it was important that I came to introduce myself and you see what I had going on. The Arinda Association, I did donate some money when I do these classes. Most of the money goes towards them. Arindas Around Town, La Merinda, Spirit Van. These are people you have to support, you know. This is very important. And working with the Spirit Van, I learned quite a few. There was wealthy people who don't know how to drive. She's 90, doesn't know how to drive. Her husband left. What does she do now, you know? So she shouldn't have to wait. And so this is very important conversations that need to happen.
Great, thank you. So not seeing a whole lot of public, but is there any public questions? Okay, so I'll close that. So thank you very much, Candace. Are there any other comments from the council or anything else?
I just appreciate, I had requested this after your interview, because I was not aware of how this, you know, the larger group connects with Arinda, citizens and Arinda resources. And so this was kind of a connecting the dots that was very helpful, so thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted to just thank you for your report, and also thank you for mentioning, I was going to mention transportation, because I think seniors around town is incredible. It provides, you know, we're really lucky to have that in Arinda. But in general, you know, affordable housing, nutrition, community gathering spaces, and, you know, transportation are great needs here for our seniors.
Absolutely. And I think that's why the garden was so important, and it was top of my list, because that does give seniors stuff to do. I know, being raised and taking care of my grandparents, like, all my life, you're human, you need human interaction. It's so long where you can just go secluded, like, okay, what am I going to do? And so that's super important, and I think we learned that during COVID as well. A lot of seniors just felt really down. And so it may seem minuscule to, you know, my peers my age, but it meant a lot to me, because you're going to get there one day. You just don't think about it right now, so.
Some of us are closer than others. Thank you so much, Candace. We really appreciate the update and the report. Okay, I'm going to bring us back then to Agenda Item H3, which is Assembly Bill 2097, the Downtown Parking Strategy, and Parking in Loufi Holidays. So I'll turn to our City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item originated with the council earlier in April. You'd had a discussion about the second part of this item, which was considering adopting a resolution temporarily suspending the Parking in Loufi Program for qualifying projects based on Assembly Bill 2097. And while the report at that time had a bit of a discussion about it there, the council at that time initially didn't proceed with that recommendation on a 3-2 vote. Subsequently, on April 30th, as a matter is initiated, Vice Mayor Mulcany asked the council to re-agendize the matter, and that was agreed to. But we were asked to provide additional information, not only about Assembly Bill 2097, but some broader downtown parking strategies. So the staff report before you this evening addresses two items. The first is to receive an update on Assembly Bill 2097 and downtown parking strategies. Discuss that and provide direction, if any, and we'll return to that in a moment. And then, since the request was to put this Parking in Loufi Holiday in the context of the broader question, then that is re-presented for you this evening to consider again. So, you know, when we had the discussion of this matter initially, and we did have some background, of course, on Assembly Bill 2097, we also had referred to some of the other things that the city's worked on over the years on parking. And this goes way back, including Urban Land Institute Technical Advisory Panel that talked about shared parking and other strategies. You had your discussion where you implemented the Parking in Loufi Program. We've included some references to that in the Nexus Study as additional background information. We also addressed parking in our recently adopted Downtown Precise Plan. And there are other future action items, once we can move forward with that, including reviving these discussions of looking at shared parking, maybe a Parking and Business Improvement District, breaking down the barriers to where, how parking works in Arinda. And even, incidentally, we did spend a little bit of time talking about how BART parking has changed so much, and the demand for BART parking in their intervening period. Before I arrived at the city, which was during COVID, the council was focused on issues about perhaps residential permit programs to overcome problems from spillover parking from the BART lot. But that has all but gone by the wayside for the moment. Who knows if that will ever see BART return to those same demand levels? So since April 30th, we did endeavor to flesh this out a bit for you, provide a lot more background information. Really weren't planning as the staff to walking you through each of these items. Though, of course, Robert Reber, our interim Planning Director, and I'd be happy to. The city attorney has, of course, looked at some of the issues as well on some of these things. But, you know, we're not really sure exactly what the council would like us to elaborate on. We bulked this up into our Downtown Parking Strategies as well, a little bit of background, the Technical Advisory Program, as I mentioned. And then we reiterated the background on the proposed Parking in Loufi Program. We did have one project that took advantage of that, that was the Bank of America remodel. They were approved after the effective date of that bill. So, for example, there, we weren't able to impose otherwise what would have been required for parking on their incremental increase in space and the conversion of it to, from basically a bank building to what'll probably likely be two or three restaurants, which would have triggered additional commercial parking requirements. So in this instance, we are trying to figure out how to address a relatively new state law without a lot of not-good examples yet about implementation strategies. Again, although Arinda and a lot of areas, I find, we are pioneering just because of where we're in a number of initiatives. So we do tend to try to do a scan to see what other places are doing. We're not the only community that's grappling with these types of issues. So hopefully, we found the information of value. I don't know, Robert, if you would like to add anything? So Robert did do a lot of the legwork here. But not really knowing exactly what the council's looking for, we're happy to sort of respond to your questions and provide any additional background information if we can, so.
I'll turn to councilmen and ask if there are any questions?
I think I've asked them, so I'll just double-check to make sure there's nothing new. But just as far as like a legal reason regarding the second part of this agenda item regarding 25A, I didn't see anything where the city is legally obligated to forgive the $823,000 parking obligation.
No, I don't think it's legally obligated. It's an option.
And to that end, that was the, I mean, the developer could go back through the process, resubmit, and we believe as staff be approved without having to provide... They're already not providing parking, so it was really a question of whether to pay the fee or not. But if, so that was one strategy. And as we explained initially, we've also heard from the council, you'd like us to find ways to streamline development, advance some projects. This would probably characterize more of an economic development initiative of removing barriers, like we did with the temporary suspension of parking requirements when uses change. So if you go from a ground-floor use that has low parking demand, the council did adopt a pilot project where we, for change of uses, were no longer requiring that they meet the parking requirements for that change in use, because the downtown sort of functions as a whole. And so that was something I think the council did maybe about a year ago, was, again, as an economic development tool. So this is a very similar strategy that would apply in this particular instance, but without the state having, again, I think what we all chafe under is the state mandates that have removed our discretion in this area, where we, if it was a new project, we couldn't impose parking since or within a half-mile of BART. And you can see that state law has its own complexities, and we've given an example or two of how other places are implementing that, so.
A question I would have, and I haven't seen anything from any of the sources that share pending legislation or whatever. I also assume 2097 is so new that there hasn't been a lot of, you know, experience with it from various cities. So I haven't seen anything that says anybody's submitting any other legislation to either modify it or add to it in any way. To the best of your knowledge, it's...
Well, we did a scan again, you know, again, at the time we had, we did sort of look. You've got the one example of LA how they're implementing it. But no, we haven't heard of any legislative changes that are being proposed. I think it's relatively new. And like most state legislation, quite often, they need subsequent fine-tuning. And the other thing that, just as we did point out here, which has emerged since this legislation was developed, is MTC is also imposing their own restrictions under their transit-oriented development policy. So while the state has said, within a half-mile BART, we can't impose parking, with a few exceptions, which we discussed in the staff report, MTC's new transit-oriented development policies, which we'll have to comply with unless we want to be ineligible for OAB grants, are going to impose parking maximums. So even if a developer wanted to build parking, MTC is going to require that we eventually impose parking maximums. So while they could get out of it, providing any parking under state law, let's say someone wanted to provide five spaces per thousand of retail, MTC is going to limit us to say they can only do one and a half or two, or else we will be ineligible for regional funding. So we're really are squeezed between the state and these regional entities. And, you know, this is very much in a time of transition in regard to these factors. We're blessed to have a BART station, but what comes with that are these other folks deciding, you know, how to shape our community, because we have a BART station, so.
So that was my only question. No other questions here, okay? Then I'll ask if there's any public comment on this item?
Mayor G, councilmembers, it's good to see you. Obviously, we're very appreciative for your consideration and understanding on this topic. We know it's very complex. I just, in this three minutes that I have, like to, my goal would be to give you our understanding of it, which obviously David's done a phenomenal job, where we are currently in the status of the project, and then the impact of what this does for us. To start, as we understand it, it's a current policy. We're expanding upon that. We just happen to be a project that covers that expansion of the policy. If there were others, that would be great. We'd love to not be the only one. I think proven successful will prove that out, that that's what's going to happen. So July 22 of, you know, two years ago, we were approved by a 6-1 vote by the Planning Commission. That project will not change with your approval of this expansion of the policy. Every element about the project will stay the same. Since July of 2022, we submitted our plans to Contra Costa Central Sanitary. They spent four months on our plans. We submitted our building permit to the Contra Costa County Building Department in January of 2023. We recently got our building permit last month. You can do the math, 14 months. We've diligently spent time, money, and energy and effort to the success of this project. We were committed to its success. The outcome of this greatly accelerates our success. It accelerates our timelines. The delays cause effects on leasing, on financing, and on our contracts with our contractors. So this does have a monumental shift in how we build upon the momentum that we've created in the last six months, in addition to the hard work of the public officials and city officials that have worked on this project to get it to where it is today. We're, again, very thoughtful and prescriptive on how we've operated, and we feel like we are going to deliver a phenomenal project for this community and be of value to it. So we, again, appreciate your consideration, and hope that you guys see how this could accelerate where we are today.
Thank you, Mr. Gent. Okay. Seeing no other public comment, I'll close public comment. I'll bring it back to the council for a discussion. So is there anyone that wants to start?
I would defer to the person who, I'd be happy to go first unless the person who brought it back for reconsideration prefers to.
I would be happy to, but I also wanted to just, Madam Mayor, you want to note for the record that we got?
Oh, yes, I will note that the Vice Mayor, we did get written public comment on this item that is included in all the materials for our meeting tonight and available.
And then I'll, yeah, I'll open up if that's okay. Just, I did ask that this be brought back, because unfortunately, I think when it first came to our council, it was quite late at night and well into our meeting, and our discussion wasn't as lengthy as, and I had a lot of questions. And so on that basis, did not feel like I... And so, on that basis, did not feel like I could approve it because I still had remaining questions. That, that may have been, I may have been remiss not to answer them all in advance of the meeting, but nonetheless, they remained. And so, I brought this back because I do feel like, you know, subsequent to that, and I thank staff for an ex, like, a very thorough report that, that really has addressed a lot of my questions. And I, I would like to see this, you know, I'm, I think this resolution is a good idea. I think that, that, I, I see no, no need at this point to, to, to force this developer to jump through the hoops, or to force any, anyone who would qualify, if there are any others out there, to jump through the hoops and reapply at that point. I do believe that if they reapplied, we would be granting them the Parking in Lou variance, you know, the, the holiday rather. And, you know, so while there may be admittedly an additional permit fee involved with that to the city, it's fairly minimal, and it would require more staff time to go through that, all of that, and would delay things another, you know, six months or so. So, I, you know, in terms of the financial impact based on the projects out there, that, that is my understanding, and I don't see any need to have that happen. And, and as a policy matter, you know, what I wanted to have answered previously for myself was, you know, get a better understanding of the legality of the bill, how it's used, an overview of parking and the legislation around parking generally in Arinda, and I, and I do thank staff for giving me, giving us a report that I think answered those questions for me. So, so I, I support this resolution now.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment?
Yes, I would, Mayor.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I want to thank the council, Councilmember Malkani for bringing this back. I do think that the conversation wasn't complete at the last time, and it was an easy no for me at the last meeting because, for that reason alone. And now I've had several more weeks to really look at this. And thank you to the staff for doing a very nice job. And looking at the City of Los Angeles, I actually externed for the Land Use Division of the City of Los Angeles. So, I'm familiar with them, and there are some very, very, quite frankly, brilliant people who, I think we might have some people here who have argued in those high federal courts, but they, and they certainly have, and these are really top thinkers. And so, and, and just the work, so, so I want to emphasize here that I see two issues in front of us. One is how we make sure that we are complying with the law that was mentioned. AB 2097 was the assembly bill, which is government code 65863.2, which took effect on January 1st, 2023. And the other is in whether in light of these facts, so that's one discussion, is how do we deal with this law going forward in Arinda? And the second one is whether in light of this law that we should forgive the developers of the station, the project proponents, from their obligation that would be triggered by pulling the, the permits to pay the city $823,810 for parking that is a requirement of their project approval, June 14th, 2022, six months before that law went into effect. So, I've bifurcated my comments into these two tranches. One, first, how do we handle the question of the parking for the projects that would otherwise be subject to parking in absence of AB 2097? And what I would say is that staff has provided us, you know, I guess they could only find this one example from Los Angeles, and, you know, it's a compromise, it strikes a compromise. Is it perfect? I would say no. Is it, is it, is it close to, is it as good as we're going to be able to do in light of these state mandates? And I would say yes. What it is, is a compromise. It's saying, hey, we as the staff do not have the energy, we do not have the resources in this city to look and see if there's a significant impact on the commercial parking in this community to, to warrant an exception to this, to this, to this exemption from parking. So, we are going to let the public come forward, we're going to let the restaurant owners, we're going to allow the property owners, we're going to allow everybody who has an interest in this, the people who come and shop in the city, to come forward, and if they have found, if they believe that there is a, if there is a substantial effect on the commercial parking in the area, that they can present that within 25 days, and that is where the, and then the official, the planning director, makes the decision within that 30 days as to whether or not the project is exempt. I think that, that provides us an opportunity that we, a base, it provides us a way of providing a, a basic right to our residents to, to, to comment on these projects. And, you know, the station is an example of those projects, right? That, that went through the planning department. That was a noticed process, a very lengthy process, as has been commented, and, you know, staff thankfully, his time is paid for, for those projects through the fees for the application. Now, what isn't paid for, of course, is the, all the tremendous work that our staff does in economic development. I know our city manager was an ICSC just this week. He goes and, just yesterday, goes to fly to go and, and try to drum up business for our city. And, and that's what's really, I think, at stake here. That's the important thing, is the work that we're doing to, that our, our staff, their community has done to economically develop this city, and we've been working hard for a very long time. And so, on this matter, you know, we've been calling it a parking holiday, a shortcut, and, and I'm, I'm just here, I really, I just, it doesn't, it doesn't sit right with me. We can do more, we can do better. We have the resources here to do better among the smarts on this council. And by disenfranchising, quite frankly, our community by having not given them the right, the ability to come forward and to make these comments, to provide this information about parking, if nothing else, and to just simply, in the back room here, say, okay, we're going to give up $823,000 that we had collected based, for, I'll read it from our, what we did in 2019, funds collected could be used for, and this is very much what I thought they were going to be used for when I, when we, we voted for this vehemently, could be used for leasing or purchasing land for parking, purchasing a portion of a parking structure being built in a development, or for implementation of other measures to reduce parking demand or provide for more efficient use of public parking. And these were ideas from our past city manager. He was city managers in bigger communities. He pointed to Walnut Creek, he believed had used that, and he'd used it in developments. And so, you know, is it, is it likely that, that maybe, I don't know, I don't know what the likelihood is, if the project proponent comes back through the process, that there's a finding that there is not a substantial effect on the parking? It seems to me that 80 spaces is quite a few. And when you go down there at the end of the day, I don't know, are there 80 spaces there between Siam Orchid and Village Pizza and the, you know, and Genuine Goodness and the, those places? I don't know. But quite frankly, any kind of holiday that we're giving to this one project proponent is at the cost of these other places that are providing the parking. And my concern with that is that it's not, it, it's a one gift to one person. It's not looking at the whole, at a sophisticated approach like the state of Delaware. A lot of us are lawyers up here. The state of Delaware doesn't, isn't where everyone goes to build their entity because it gives free, free giveaways. It's because it has a consistency in the law and, and it has a sophisticated business net framework. And so, you know, and I, so I know that our, our interim planning director, our city manager, who is, is willing to stick with us as, as long as we need to find our next city manager, are, you know, are, are so hoping to provide us a win, and I just, I fear this is a, is a shortcut, is what it's been called. It's a shortcut, it's, and it's, it's, it's not the real deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. Councilmember Iverson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would just like to rebut one point on that very eloquent speech, and that is, I was the chair of the Planning Commission in 2022 at the meeting where this was approved, and there was a comment that we have disenfranchised the public's opportunity to discuss the loss of parking. That is not true. There was quite a lot of public comment at that meeting, and we really talked about it and thought about those comments. The owners of the Rite Aid building and the vintage building spoke, and, and people in the public who did or didn't want it spoke. So, we made the decision about parking or not parking in light of extensive public comment and deliberation. There's a separate issue about the roughly $800,000 fee that was an important part of that decision. And if we were talking tonight about making a discretionary decision to not collect that fee, that would be a much more difficult decision, in my opinion. But because of this change to the law that happened subsequently, I agree with what Vice Mayor Malkani said about the only thing we could achieve at this point is delays and a small permit fee and more staff time to put them back through the process. I believe that the $800,000 is not on the table currently, and I think those are two different issues. I think the decision to, to approve this without parking was made in 2022, and tonight we have a choice to either put them back through the process to reapply or to approve this resolution, and I support the resolution. I would make one other comment, just that the ULI TAP panel, for those of you that have read it, was really persuasive about the strip mall layout of this part of Arinda, that it's actually a, I believe, a failed urban planning layout, that we have the retail setback and a sea of concrete with dangerous driveways that aren't bikeable, and it's not walkable, and it's not what we want for the ultimate Arinda walkable village that we hope for, to have all of this surface parking out front. And so, really being able to open our minds and think about some, some concepts that really haven't been accepted in most of my growing up life about shared parking, rather than each building has to provide all of its own church on Easter Sunday parking, you know, about places that are more walkable or bikeable, or, you know, just opening our minds a little bit to what it might take to get a more walkable downtown plan. And I think the downtown precise plan has text to that effect about those being goals. So, that was the other reason that I got comfortable originally with that decision.
I, I have a question that I can't believe I'm asking after all this, because I did think the staff report was much, much better this time. If we approve this resolution, are we foregoing the $823,000? That was my belief.
Yes, if the developer pulls their permit and starts before the, there's a sunset date, I forget what it is, that's proposed, maybe Robert recalls, but, you know, as long as they do it before, then yes, you are, you are foregoing that money. As, as a councilman...
And I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding, I guess, what my colleagues were saying. You believe that we're still getting the $823,000?
No, I, I, I'm vehemently against, and I'm trying to convince everyone that it is a poor idea to approve this, and that, that we don't know if the $823,000 is on the table, but we know we didn't share that at the Planning Commission.
And you believe that...
I believe that because he is entitled to pull his application, reapply, and with just the application fee and some time, we'll get the exact same project approved without the $800,000 fee. I can't imagine a reasonable developer paying the 800 when he has such a viable alternative to not pay the 800.
There are numerous, and this is where, I guess, I've felt that staff hasn't really, there are, there were numerous discretionary portions of this, and that were hard decisions. And so, I, I want to be clear, unless I'm wrong about that, that this is not a case where the developer goes and pulls, can go and simply say, I, I want to present you a letter that says I don't have to pay this. I, I mean, this is, they have to go through the entire process, including three, three discretionary levels of approval. Is that correct? Three different, three different exceptions that...
Well, you know, our, our review of it, again, as was noted, this is relatively new law. We, as your staff, and I recognize this as a point of dispute, as we read the law and understand its intent, is we wouldn't be able to make those findings, and it has to originate from the public rather than your staff, so...
Correct, but that's a very different question that what I'm asking about, is the process. I think that the council deserves to know the process that this applicant would go through in order to reapply at this time, several years later.
So, they would have to submit a new application for their basically entitled project. The only difference would be that, so it would have to go through, let me think back, Robert, what we have to make, the planning director has to make a determination about the parking question, and I'm not sure if that, I think that is a standalone process, and then it still would have to go to the Planning Commission and could be appealed up to the council, but...
Or our city attorney could also provide some.
Well, I think you may be asking about what appears in footnote one on packet page 86, which is the list of the discretionary approvals that would be required?
Perhaps.
Okay. So, those are listed as design review, commercial use permit, elevated deck permit, exception permits, revocable encroachment permit, tree removal permit, and variance.
And the reason I bring that up is this was a series, it was a series over a period of years, in which we were promised a project, in which there was a problem, and the project continually came back and said, if we get one more thing, we can do it. And there came to be a point, is that, is that incorrect?
No, no, incorrect, Councilmember Miller, but I think the point of all those processes, none of those relate to the question of parking.
Okay, but in my mind, so, okay, I don't know that the people would make the same decisions after, time after time after time after time again that this project came forward, and there was some rethinking about some of those things that were approved in the past, was that the right call? And quite frankly, my point here is that you even provided, the one, the one example that we're provided of another city that's confronted this does not make this decision at, at the staff level without providing a 25-day period during which Siam Orchid, the owners of those two properties, the, the office building behind, any member of the public could, could, could commission a traffic study and rebut some of our assumptions that, for example, that, that during COVID, everyone went away. I mean, that's opposite of what happened in suburbs. People came.
So, go ahead, Robert.
If you could clarify the question you'd like me specifically to address?
I think it was that process question about discretionary permits and what that looks like as far as, okay, we did deal with this, I think, at least with the Bank of America building, because they took advantage of this.
So, that project was entitled after AB 2097 took effect, and at that time, it was determined it was not subject to parking minimums, and therefore, the city could not impose any parking in Lou fees on that project. I can't remember the exact numbers.
That was a clear case of where that project came after the law was passed. This, this project was passed six months before the law passed. Okay.
So, at this point, the project has its entitlements. This is the station, and they are ready to pull their building permit. If they are to pull that building permit today, they would have to pay the Parking in Lou, Parking variance in Lou fee because they were entitled prior to AB 2097 taking effect. So, they are subject to the Parking in Lou fees if they want to pull their permits today. But given the amount of that fee, it would certainly be cost-effective for them to go back through the process, or I should say cheaper, however, that would involve several months of delay and additional cost to the developer. So, we as staff viewed it as inevitable, if it does go back through that process, we are likely to make the same determination as the project at Bank of America, that it wouldn't, it would not be, we could not impose those parking minimums on this project.
Right, assuming that the city council didn't want to allow the public to comment on that question, as Los Angeles has allowed its public to do. Right.
So, we, it's that, we have, we don't have those procedural guidelines like Los Angeles does, and we've not yet... not yet updated our municipal code to AB 2097, but we are obviously subject to comply with it, so.
But you can, right, so the process right now under AB 2097 is just that the planning director makes that determination. So, and that's what you're saying would happen within this three-month period. So is this, everybody in agreement that this project could go from, could be approved in three months, is what it sounds like you're saying?
That's what I would estimate, yes.
Okay, so we're talking about-
It's basically the same project comes back.
So we're talking about three months away in this project?
That's what I would estimate, yes.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Riley, did you have any comments?
I have a question now that we've just said that. I just want to, if you reapply, may I ask a question? If you reapply, what happens to your approval so far with the sanitary district and the permit? Do those, like, go by the wayside and you have to do that process again, too, that took 15 months and stuff?
I speak for the sanitary district, but the building department is effectively under contract to the city, serving as our building department. So I think we would probably just put that building permit on hold to see what happens with the entitlement process, and if the same project comes back through and could use that same building permit, they would be able to go forward more expeditiously. They wouldn't have to wait for the 12 to 14 months that it took to get through that.
So then it would probably be, I think he said it was three months for the sanitary district approval, so that if it's three months in your house, and it's three months with the sanitary group, then it's six months.
I don't want to say for certain.
We don't know.
It's an unknown for me. I'm sorry, I can't confirm what that additional time would be, whether they would start as de novo, basically new, or whether they would look at and say it's essentially the same and expedite it through.
I suppose I'd just say it depends on how much the project changed. If the only change in the project was elimination of the condition to pay the parking and lieu fees on the basis, because remember, the project has been approved with no parking already, so it would just be a question of then the fee not being payable. So if the project didn't change beyond that, I can't imagine the sanitary district or the Department of Health or anyone else would have any additional things that they would impose on the project. But if the project did change, and it's a do it sort, too, I mean, the developer could also propose other changes, such as the planning commission asked them to remove the 14 spaces they were going to put in front of the building to make it more street friendly, so, I mean, the developer, to reduce their exposure for parking and lieu fees, could go back to that design. That's something I hear them saying that they'd like to do, but when you open it up, there is a possibility that a variety of interests could request changes to the project, and, you know, that might also delay it, even though I think the way it would be presented is when it was being evaluated by staff and presented to the planning commission, by the time it gets there, it would be basically that we've determined it's eligible for this proceeding with no parking. And I recognize that, like many things with Arinda and very small cities, we still have other state laws like street vending and park vending that, you know, we've been supplanted by state law, but we haven't come back yet and created our own rules and regs. Knock on wood, we don't have a big issue, as other communities have had, but it's just a matter of we're constantly trying to grapple with these new state mandates. So we will admit, as your staff, we're telling you, this is an imperfect solution as we've presented, but we were trying to strike a balance between, as we've heard from the council, wanting a catalytic project downtown, and whether this is the one or not, I think this is really the council's call, but this is the only one we have that looks as if they're ready to start and move forward, other than the Bank of America building, which did take advantage of this provision, so. Anything else, Councilmember Riley? Vice Mayor, did you have other comments?
Only two things. One is that I just wanted to point out that the issue of establishing the parking variance in lieu fee holiday, which is so the issue of this forgiving, you know, and its applicability to this project with the $800,000 plus holiday, has been now on the agenda at our council meetings for two very public meetings. So the public has, in my view, had an opportunity to comment on the issue of the holiday in lieu fee, and we have gotten some public comment on that on both sides. So I just want to point that out for the record, and also that delays could impact, you know, there's some information in the PowerPoint that talks about, you know, leases and things like that, and delays could have an impact on that.
Let's remember, Vice Mayor Malcony, just with respect, and I'm just, without any disrespect, I just want to make sure that we, because I, you know, I'm only on the council a few more months, and this is something that the council's going to live with for a long, long time. This is it. You guys are calling this the catalyst project, and I think there's others that, you know, that there's going to be some choices. This is a choice to do something and against other things. I think it's a really big deal, and so I'm going to sit here and just, I just want to make sure. One of my big problems, the reason I haven't met with the developer, is because I don't think it's ethical. I think this was a planning commission, this hasn't, process-wise, I get it, I get it, we can create a law that applies to one, what we've done is create this law, this holiday, that applies to one person, and that's what we've done here. And so I haven't reached out to them, and that process is, at least for now, so sacred. You know, the state is tearing down CEQA, maybe we get rid of CEQA. For now, CEQA is the law. It's important. We, as a state, have, you know, felt that that's important, and us, I, you know, I don't know how many people you told about this meeting, I don't know how many people, you know, that we told about this meeting. The CEQA process does not depend on you and me and the rest of the council members telling people about what's on tonight's agenda. It depends, it's a legal process in which people are notified. The people around the project are notified. Cyam Orchid finds out about it, the owner of that property finds out about it, the owner of the vintage house knows about it, the owner of Rite Aid, all these people are given Village Pizza property. These people are given legal notice of this project, and that's what we're depriving them of here. And so this is going to be, this is a conversation, this is going to be a conversation, that we gave up $830,000 for parking in downtown, and that was meant for our community in downtown. And so I just, it just has to be said, yeah, just so that you understood that the difference of people had two opportunities to show up at a public meeting.
Councilmember Riley?
Well, one thought that comes to mind, Councilmember Miller, is that it's, if they have the right to walk in and apply again, it's really, it's really only a loss of 40,000, the price it costs to file again, not 800. I mean, they can just walk in and do it, and we've lost 40, not 800.
But why do we lose 40?
Well, we would lose 40 if we pass this resolution. But if we don't pass it, then they come in and they don't pay 800, but they pay the 40.
I think Councilwoman Riley is referring to the estimated cost to process the application.
They have to pay $40,000.
The application fee.
But that also can only, we only charge as much as it takes to process the application.
I'm just using that number. It's something way smaller than 800.
I just wasn't following it. Could you share it again? I'm so sorry. So you're just saying that they would lose 40,000, that the developer would?
Yeah, well, I was saying that, you said that you would have to explain this and say that we've lost $800,000 that we could have had as a city.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's up to the city as to whether-
If this resolution is passed, you just said that-
Yes, we will have to-
The city would lose 800,000.
Well-
So if we don't pass this resolution, he can come back in and never have to pay his 800,000. All he has to pay is 40.
That's not how it works.
It would work that way if we turn this down.
Okay, if you, you can decide that, but no one can ever prove what's going to happen through those several discretionary processes and the things that have to be, because this was, this has been as long as I've been on the council, this has been going on. As long as I've been on the council, somebody brought up, brought up, the woman, brought up, brought up Fairs Building, she bought the property since this was going on, or around the same time, she just bought the property. This has been going on the entire time I was on the council. This is, I guess it's a three, what I'm hearing is that staff believes it's a three-month process, but this was, I'm assuming that you guys all read all the planning commission documents. I don't know. It's, you know, if you have to go back through the process, you go back through the process. So the city is now entitled to $830,000. The city may not be entitled to $830,000 if, if it were to reapply, and, for example, the planning director unilaterally makes the finding that it's not subject to parking, or, or this council decides to give the public a voice, and the public gets to provide a parking study, because we haven't provided a parking study. This is just based on his best guess. So if we here decide to vote to allow the public to pay for a parking study, and they put in a parking study, and it says something different, that also could mean that there's still parking. So it's not just a matter of somebody going in. Now, it could be, and I think what you're saying is maybe, what you're saying is that you don't want us as a council to be shown as causing a developer to be charged $40,000 when there's virtually no chance that they should have to pay this. And I guess I just don't see the public as faulting us for that. Makes sense.
Okay, any other comments? Otherwise, I'll make mine. Okay. You know, in reconsidering this from what was presented and discussed last time, I think what I would say for myself is I vehemently disagree with Assembly Bill 2097. The fact that I disagree with it isn't doing any good at all. It's the law. I also disagree with MTC's idea, and mostly it's because all of this state-level social engineering isn't reality, okay? People still drive their cars. They're going to drive their cars for a long time to come, and we do have parking problems, and people are going to be aggravated with the parking. So I'm, you know, I'm deeply opposed to this law, I'm deeply opposed to the fact that this keeps getting lauded on to us and affecting our community, and we don't have any control over it. But it is what it is, and the reality is, is that, you know, putting this project back through the process to apply, to simply figure out again that this law is going to apply to it, it does, in retrospect, from how I interpreted some things last time, feel like it's just an unnecessary thing. I do not know whether this developer is going to be able to bring this project to fruition. I do know that people that are going to want to lease in the building, I think, would still be very interested in parking, and I philosophically think it's wrong that the city isn't going to get the 800 and some thousand dollars. And I mean that, I think it's philosophically wrong because there are going to be impacts to the city, but it's not, in this case, it's not our call. AB 2097 is going to apply. No matter how many processes we put this back through, it's going to turn out the same way. So at this point, in terms of the actual, I think it is, I think it's sad, and I think it's wrong that the city isn't going to be able to receive the revenue after having given so many concessions to make this project real. But nevertheless, that's the way it is, and presumably, in terms of the actual physical parking, people wanting to lease in this building are going to want to see some evidence that there's a way for people to park. And so that's really between the developer and his potential tenants. So I'm sorry that the city is going to lose out on the money, but in terms of the fact that many of our residents would, you know, remain hopeful that this project will get developed, I think it has been a longtime project that the city has wanted to see developed, and we get asked about it quite frequently. I don't see, I don't agree with it, I'm, I think it's wrong that the city will not receive anything for it, but I also believe, at the end of the day, that it's going to come out that 2097 is going to apply, and we're not going to be able to stop that from applying. So I would have to say, at this point, it seems that, given all of our other priorities, that it doesn't seem worthwhile to not move forward with allowing the holiday. So that would be my comments on it. So unless there are other comments, I'm willing to entertain a motion on what we should do about Agenda Item H3, which is whether to adopt a resolution temporarily suspending the parking variance in lieu fees for qualifying projects within one half mile of the Bard Station. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, do you want to do a roll call, vote on this one? I'll ask our city clerk, too.
Councilmember Iverson, aye. Councilmember Miller, aye. Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malcony?
Aye.
And Mayor G?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Item H4, which is the proposed reorganization of Public Works and Facilities Maintenance. So I'll turn to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. This is something the council tasked me to do as your city manager that has involved quite a bit of employee consultation, so I'll just walk you through at a very high level about what the recommendation is. Tonight, you're sort of, I'm premiering this for you, and if the council's generally in agreement, then we'll incorporate this into, when we bring back the mid-year cycle to you in June, and we'll take some time to implement this reorganization that's being proposed, especially addresses facilities maintenance and facilities capital projects. So first, I'd like to note that I had the great pleasure, as part of doing this, and I'll walk you through the process more broadly, of engaging with our employees at all levels about this, including our line employees who work both in facilities maintenance and parks and recreation and public works maintenance, also engaged with the department heads who are involved in these areas and the key middle managers on it. Anytime you're talking about change, you know, it's always a little hard to navigate that, but in sitting down, our public works maintenance crew is only three line employees and a supervisor, and facilities maintenance crew is two full-time employees, line employees and a supervisor. And, you know, as I was working with them, I just want to convey to you and the communities, they all work very hard for us, right? I mean, these are the people who come in at 2:00 in the morning, if it's raining, to clog storm drains, and then quite often have to come back the next day. They're the ones that are called back on weekends. I think Councilwoman Riley called me, she was going to be a little bit late for the meeting because a big oak tree had fallen, a branch had fallen, was blocking a portion of minor road. So they would be the ones that would come back in and eliminate that and address that situation. So what we're talking about here and what motivated this was not that sort of day-to-day getting the job done in the field, but there are, we did see, for examples, especially on the facilities side, and it's just given competing priorities, we had the example of the Crossroads Park not moving forward. There's a lot of complications, but also many of the more complicated facilities projects are more like public works projects in that they need some engineering, they need some engineered solutions, and ultimately, what you'll see here at the end of the day, we believe, and the team that sort of had this was myself, working with our Director Administrative Services and our Human Resources Manager, is we'd be better served by a different structure that would take the facilities maintenance side out of Public Works, which is an operating department, and shifting it into a new maintenance division in Public Works, so they could access the engineering and other support and have more, a greater skills base of delivering projects. So again, it's mostly focused on that, whether it be the tile repair of the library, or moving forward the community park upgrade, or any of these other things. The belief is it'd be better off it would be hosted in Public Works. And so a way that this kicked off was, we had a firm come in from the outside that we asked this question. I included the RFP that went out, so you could just see sort of how we framed it. I would say, as your city manager, I really wanted this to have someone else take a look at it, and at the time I'd been here, I'd begun to develop some ideas about how we might do this, but I wanted someone else to engage with the employees, see where they landed, and that firm was MRG, and they did present their report to us, and since we received the report, I did circle back with the department heads multiple times, the department heads, the key middle managers, and also the line staff. And what I'm recommending to you is sort of a hybrid based off of two scenarios they gave you, and I went a bit further in that. They had talked about leaving some of the staffing in parks and rec, but what you'll see in my recommendation is that I believe we'd be better off to consolidate this function in Public Works with a Public Works superintendent who would, or maintenance and facilities- Maintenance and Facility Superintendent at Public Works, that would head a Maintenance and Facilities Division, reporting to the Director of Public Works and Engineering. Both those groups would remain work groups. We still have a Facilities Work Group headed by Steve. And we still have a Public Works Maintenance Work Group headed by the other Steve. But they would report to the Public Works, the Facilities and Public Works Superintendent. Parks and Rec Facilities Maintenance Operations, including landscape park maintenance, all that would be transferred to Public Works. And that work group would consist of the existing facilities and parks supervisor and the two facilities maintenance workers. And in effect, Public Works, like the rest of the city departments, would be, excuse me, Parks and Rec would become a client of Public Works. This is a fairly typical structure in other organizations. Just coincidentally, it's what we had in Hercules Community I came before here. And I saw that relationship work very well. So if the, there's a need, Todd then would become the client for the Public Works Department. The Facilities and Maintenance Superintendent would say, okay, I understand you need to do X at Wilder. I will gather the resources, make sure we're following the right contracting procedures, be dedicated to that together with other projects. And it's not commingled as much with operations. But we do want to make sure the operations side continues to work very well in Parks and Rec. So, for example, the Facilities Work Group would still stay in their physical location at the community center because there's not actually room for them either in, in the courtyard. But also, over time, we would have, we would have a single classification. The employees would be cost-trained. Because the other thing we identified is having a greater level of resources when we have to do storm and other emergency response. There is a level of that that does occur already. We want to institutionalize that and make sure we, because we are seeing different calibers of storms, for example, that are occurring. Not this last winter wasn't so bad, but the two winters prior really taxed our resources in responding to some of these more major events. So we'd have more people in the on-call rotation and be developing people's skills base differently. But while they'll have a concentration in facilities or public works maintenance, the idea over time is we would do some more cross-training and have some interoperability there. As I mentioned, we would have a new single maintenance and facilities worker job classification that would be developed. And the existing staff would transition to that. We would add an additional, we did cut between facilities maintenance and public works maintenance about four years ago. We did drop two positions as we began to grapple with COVID. And so, the net result of this will be 80 hours, basically, per week of additional time between the superintendent position and the one additional position, still supported by additional part-time staffing. And we have been working to bolster our part-time facilities attendants and recreation coordinators that could take on some of the more routine classroom setup and whatnot in Parks and Rec. Now, that will also, though, occur in part because our staff there does a great job in programming. We don't want to do anything that distracts from programming. But as we free up some of Todd's time, because he won't have as much direct responsibility for the facilities, the idea is we can make that more robust. And that's a much more cost-effective way to provide those types of services in support of our Parks and Rec program than using the higher skilled, more highly compensated, full-time facilities workers to do that. The Art in Public Places program would remain in Parks and Rec. And Parking Enforcement, which is now in Public Works, we would shift to the Police Department just to also have them be a little bit more focused on, and be able to dedicate more to the capital projects, the facilities side of capital projects. Now, what you'll see is this is articulated a bit more in the report. This will be, of course, the transition period. There'll be further actions. We have reached out and engaged with the Teamsters. The line employees are represented by our Teamsters Bargaining Group. I will say, we have a very good relationship with them. We're in the third year of a three-year member understanding. I've chatted with their business agent. Will be, there'll be some things we'll have to meet and confer on, like the new job description or whatnot. And we are going to be meeting, I think, maybe the next week or so, just to bring him a little more up to speed. But I have been engaging with their members, not negotiating. But Robbie is the shop steward with the Teamsters. He's in the Public Works Maintenance Group. You know, they've been very supportive of the effort and they see there's positive outcomes for them. So, really, the, well, this is, there's a lot of supporting material here for you. The idea is that we would transition over the course of the next fiscal year. First step would be hire a Public Works and Maintenance and Facility Superintendent, get that job filled, and then begin to fully implement the reorganization. And we think, I believe, and the team believes, that would provide benefit, address some of the areas where we just have, we haven't been able to advance some of the key facilities projects as quickly as we'd like. And it's really just because we can bring a different focus and we would expand our capacity in the event of emergencies are the two main goals. So, so my hope is, since this idea of looking at this did originate with the council, that hopefully we've landed on a solution that you think would make sense. We, as the staff, are recommending that to you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. You're not taking any particular action tonight, but if you had any concerns or whatnot, we could address some of those and bring those back. I should also note that when you adopted the two-year budget in June of last year, did approve a decision package, set aside funding to implement whatever was going to be the outcome of this study. So there is funding available in the budget to implement this, which we believe we can do within that $250,000 ongoing annual allocation and some other looks internal to the city's operating budget. So we would be able to accomplish it with already budgeted resources.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this end? Okay. Seeing none from the council, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Seeing no members of the public that want to comment, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the staff, see if there, or, excuse me, bring it back to the council and see if there are any comments. No comments? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just, I just, you addressed some of my questions in the, in the staff report. Thank you. But I did want to make sure, I think that the programming that's done by Parks and Rec is really a jewel in Arinda. And I want to make sure that, you know, maybe, you know, that the city manager and management in general be really sensitive to making sure that, of course, nobody is overburdened. As you, anytime you go through a transition, there's always some growing pains, right? But, you know, especially as we move into sort of the summer months with really just, you know, the excellent programming that our community relies on. And I do want to, again, you know, as always, congratulate our, our Parks and Rec staff, our director and supervisor for recreational programs we have, which are, I think, turning out to be, and for many of our residents, it's still their first touch point, or one of their first touch points with our city.
And you can rest assured, I think, by time we're able, by time we get the job description for the superintendent, bring that back to the council, recruit someone. So really, as we get through this summer period, I really see no change. You know, and that will give us time to get things geared up. And then we've already been working, and I want to compliment Parks and Rec on that. You know, we have been, and Ginger, our Human Resources Manager, we have been actively recruiting, you know, and the idea is to cultivate that cadre. But as, I mean, I fully understand, you know, we will still have the employees there physically. If someone doesn't show up for work, they can simply walk over and say, hey, can we get some help in setting up for this event? And, and the guys are skilled at doing that, that crew. I still think that would happen. And I think that's one of the benefits of not moving them physically, is they will still be there. I want to say, one of the best things about working in Arinda that I've seen in my just over three years is people do step up and help each other. We don't let anyone, you know, I, I can't say they've ever called me to set up. But when I'm at, at events, if someone needs some help setting up, I'm out there doing that. Heck, I drive the chipper in the parade, you know? That's not because I get celebrity stature, but that's because I'm available to do it and someone else doesn't have to come in and do it. But I, I think we're, we're very cognizant of that. And I've heard those, those concerns expressed. But again, the bottom line is, we're adding 80 hours of staff capacity per week to the equation. So we just got to make sure we get, and we're freeing up time in Parks and Rec for them as well. We just got to make sure that scenario works. So we're, it's a, it's a plus as far as resources. And I want to thank the council for being willing to invest in this. It's very hard to be asked to do something when there's not the resources available to address. Basically, the problem is, we did cut, so we're basically only, by adding two positions in this thing, we're only going to get back to where we were four years ago. So, but it's a different structure, which we think will be more effective.
Comments from this side?
No, we appreciate the work that's been, that's gone into this and by, by Parks and Rec and by, by Public Works Center, city management team.
Councilmember Iverson?
Only that I support it and thought it was very well presented.
Well, I, I think it's a very good idea. I think it's very logical. And I think it, hopefully, will be beneficial overall, both for the city and the staff in terms of, you know, work functions. So I'm certainly in favor of it. So, so we don't have to take any other action tonight?
No, so we'll bring it back. You know, these things will be incorporated when we bring back the mid-year. But again, it's not going to be like a light switches turned. So it'll really be the next fiscal years, we'll transition into this structure. So there may be some fine-tuning and we can do that as part of the next two-year budget, if that's necessary. But, you know, I, I recognize any transition is hard, right? And, you know, we're very much geared up to make sure we make that, address that and address people's concerns. So, you know, and a number of the employees, they, you know, I chatted with them, with our team in a variety of settings, and, you know, and they did express those concerns, right? So, you know, that helped influence finally where I landed and what recommendations that we've made to you, so.
Okay. Looking at my clock, if we're going to finish up what's on our agenda tonight, we need to consider whether we have a motion to extend the time tonight. Does anyone have a motion for?
30 minutes? Does that sound like a good amount of time? I'm seeing some nods.
Hopefully, we can finish sooner, but.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, that's an allowance. I would propose that we extend the meeting for up to 30 minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're, we'll move forward then with Item H5, which is the Legislative Advocacy Services Ad-Hoc.
This can be very brief. The council had a budget referral that requested we set aside some money to retain a firm to perhaps do legislative advocacy. We did issue a request for proposals. We got four proposals and strategizing with Mayor G, the thought was to have the council form a two-member ad-hoc to interview the firms. I mean, certainly, the staff could do that. But I think this is something that is good for the council to be engaged with. So that's a recommended action, is to consider forming an ad-hoc in, later in June. I imagine they'd be remote interviews. We could have two of you interview and come back in, one-year meetings in July with a recommendation, if your ad-hoc is able to make a selection, which I imagine they will be.
So, since a lot of this was part of my thinking to begin with, I'm more than willing to be part of the ad-hoc. So I'm willing to entertain any volunteers on the council that are interested.
If nobody wants, I don't have any relevant experience, but I am around in June and I haven't stepped up for one yet. So I'm not happy to be your second if nobody has a better qualified volunteer.
Are there any, any other competition to be the volunteer?
No competition. I have some comment that I just wanted to throw in on this. So is this now the time? Is that the right time?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I, I was just, great, I'm glad to, glad we're doing this. I, I think it's one of those costs that we should watch and see if it's effective. I think it's kind of like the Tri-Pepe and Smith, that that might be another one that we kind of look at, maybe find out this is super successful. I, I haven't heard a lot of work with the Tri-Pepe-Smith stuff. And maybe it's been happening and I need to see it more. But I think that there's some costs that we're going to have to look at, just going forward. And maybe just, I'm just kind of planting that seed in, in the air there because I, these are new, kind of different costs than we had it before. And just in my prior, you know, seven years here, we were penny-pinching. We were penny-pinching so hard. And I just, I kind of feel like the faucet's on and, and then it's going to dry up really fast. And so I just, I just want to put that out there. So, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of this and your ad-hoc.
Certainly a valid concern. We have to continually watch that. So are there any, any other questions about this? Okay, I'll ask if there's any public comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. So our action then would be for?
To form an ad-hoc with the members being, as I heard, Mayor G and Councilmember Iverson.
Okay, so we need a motion to?
I would think so, yes.
Okay. Is someone willing to make that motion?
I'll move to form that ad-hoc. Thinking?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I guess we'll work with staff to figure out how to get that set up in the logistics. Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Iverson. All right, that brings us back to commission, committee appointments. And we kind of ran out of time for our opportunity to appoint a new planning commissioner. So we are bringing it back to this meeting because it needs to be a, a public meeting. And so we had the pleasure of interviewing John Connor a second time and Molly Doctors Raja Shakar. I'm sure I'm saying that quite wrong. And we had some preliminary discussion about them and wanted to bring it back so we could conclude making an appointment to the Planning Commission. So with that, I'm, I'm not sure there's any questions, but I'll ask council if there's any questions relative to it. Okay. I will ask if there's any public comment. And seeing no public comment, I'll close that, bring it back. And presume that we can just pick up our, our conversation. Or, or I will ask it this way. Would somebody like to, given our past discussion, would somebody like to make a motion of which of these candidates we are going to consider appointing to the Planning Commission?
I want to make the motion. I'm happy to, if no one else wants to.
I am not sure where we left. So I think we're kind of looking at each other because I think we left off with some indecision. Does anyone have any suggestions as to process?
Well, I think that somebody can just make a motion.
Let's hear what you got.
Okay. I would just, I would propose that we appoint John Connor to the Planning Commission and that we appoint Molly Doctors R to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
Is there a second? Is there a comment?
I just think we're very lucky that we have such incredible talent in Arinda. I was, I was contemplating making a motion to, to appoint Molly Doctors Raja Shakar to the Planning Commission. But we have, we have great candidates, so.
I think how this works, I should probably go back to some kind of training if we want.
Did you want, were you asking for a, were you asking for an alternate motion?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So can you lead us through that? It's the, it's our.
You have the first one and then you make a new one.
My recollection is, so that's not a friendly amendment. I believe that's a substitute motion. So you can make your substitute motion and see if there's a second. Okay, so my substitute motion is to adopt, I mean, sorry, appoint Molly Doctors Raja Shakar to the Planning Commission.
Oh, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so now we have two competing motions.
Does not happen often.
Oh, it doesn't? So the mayor has no recollection of what to do next?
I think you vote on the substitute motion first.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
And then, if it fails, then you go back and vote on the initial motion.
This is the benefit we get from going to the A-Bag General Conference.
Okay, so, so because we have competing motions, I'm going to suggest a roll call vote. Or, I guess first I should ask, is there any additional comment from any of the council members?
Oh, I would, I would just say that, yes. I just feel so fortunate in Arinda that this is a community where people step up. And it, it, not only do we not get paid for these jobs, but it costs us a lot and lost business opportunities. business opportunities, people leave work. It's a huge deal, and the more you give, the, the more you give up. And so, the fact that we have these, you know, the more you do, the more you give up. And so, the fact that we have people who are willing to do these jobs, you know, we spent a lot of the meeting talking about the planning commission, and it's a really big job, and the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and that's been a changing role. These are hard jobs, and the fact that we have volunteers for these jobs and other jobs around the city, we are just, we are, we should count ourselves as very grateful, so that's mine.
Yeah, I, I would echo that. We certainly are very fortunate. My recollection is, and we can have our, depending on how our vote goes, we could have our city clerk revisit it, but my understanding is, is Molly, my recollection, as Molly said, she would be willing to consider TSAC, and my understanding was John did not want to be on a, on TSAC, which I think is our only other open committee commission at this point. Correct?
Correct. That's what I understand after our initial interviews.
Okay. So, that brings us back to voting on our competing motion. So, so you want to do a roll call vote for us?
The substitute motion to appoint Molly to the planning commission, I'll take the roll call vote. Councilmember Iverson?
Aye.
Councilmember Miller?
Aye.
Sorry. Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Malkani?
Aye.
And Mayor G.
Okay, I didn't expect that. All right, aye.
So, the motion carries. To appoint Molly. To repeat back, I believe that was a three in favor, two opposed, on the motion to appoint Molly to the planning commission and John to the TSAC.
John doesn't want to do TSAC.
Oh, okay, so just Molly to the planning commission. No action on John.
Oh, given that we had a majority, I assume we're complete, and we don't go back to do anything with the original.
Correct. And you have a vacancy remaining on the TSAC, and the city clerk will. I will continue to recruit, recruit on that. I assume that's the direction that you would like to give me.
That's, yes, we would love to have, particularly for that commission, we would love to have another member, so.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that brings us to council member reports. So, do we have council member reports? I'm willing to start on either side. I'm, I've completely lost track of what might have happened since our last council meeting.
And out of town since the last time I saw you at this table, so.
I guess you could report on your vacation, but probably in the interest of time, we, yeah.
Very quickly, in addition to the, we had the, you can talk about the, the meeting we had with the commission and committee chairs and vice chairs, Madam Mayor? So, I'll let you talk about that.
Yeah, we did this, I've lost track of time. Last week, we had, we had two meetings. The Vice Mayor and I attended the first one, which was a, a leadership coffee with the invited chairs and vice chairs of our committees and commissions here that volunteer for the city, and so we were able to have a good discussion. We had a fairly good representation of our various advisory groups, and we were able to have a, a pretty good conversation about, you know, some of the issues, challenges, rules, liaison positions with the council. Yeah, a fairly good discussion from a lot of different directions, I think, as well as understanding what some of their concerns were. And then I'll let those of you who were involved in the, on Saturday, there was a follow-up training session for the committees, commissions.
No, and, and just, I just want to thank our city clerk, as well as our city manager and city attorney for all being present at that, and I think it, it was a productive 90-minute session with a lot of our, our volunteer leadership base in Arinda, and I think imported, I think several things were imparted, including, and perhaps the training materials could be circulated if they haven't already to the council, but, because they were useful, but I think that, you know, the importance of sort of, and why we need to abide by the Brown Act at all these meetings, and how to go about doing that, and how to handle certain situations, and there was interest in that. And it was well-attended and I think well-received.
And of course, we jinxed ourselves because we talked about how lucky we were, we didn't, haven't had a speaker like the one we had tonight, so, you know.
And, and then just a couple other things. The, I actually was also able to stop in at Cal Shakes, is, they had their 50th anniversary Saturday, and I was able to go just for a short while, but the, you know, their director and a couple board members were there, and we're, we're grateful that, you know, we were there and wanted to, expressed an interest in sort of getting together, and, and, and so they may be reaching out to you, Councilmember Riley, to do that, and just to form more partnerships and seeing how they could work together. And the last thing was, I had the benefit of being able to go to an Eagle Scouts award ceremony, which was lovely. And then I did want to say, because it came up that at our last meeting, we, we passed a proclamation recognizing Jewish American Heritage Month, that a couple members and residents of Arinda who identify as Jewish sort of expressed their gratitude, that we did that, honored, honored that month, given the rise in antisemitism, and we're really glad that Arinda's a community that really provides an emphasis that everyone belongs here. And that was, I think, especially heartwarming, and we wanted to share that, that we, that someone thanked me for that.
Great. Other council member reports? I, I would like to note, because I don't believe we've had a council member or a council meeting since I did it, but the Vice Mayor was able to appear this last weekend at an Eagle Court. A week ahead of that, or a week, or two weeks ahead of that, I was able to appear. But the reason I want to bring mine up was because I had the honor of giving the Eagle Rank Award proclamations to our first young women that became Eagle Scouts under the new reorganized scouting organization, where the girls and boys can now choose which path that they would like to be involved in. So, that was very exciting, it was very inspiring to see these three young women that had earned the rank of Eagle in scouting. So, I did want to comment on that because they had, you know, were very impressive young women, and it was very exciting with the changes to see that happening, so. Okay, I'm going to assume the city manager's going to comment on some of our upcoming activities.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Of course, by my watch, I have 14 minutes or 13, no, I'm just joking, I won't take that long.
Councilmember Riley says you.
I know, I know, she's got the long hook. Well, first, before we get to events coming up, I'd like to share with the council and the community, and some of the staff will be hearing it for the first time, and I'll share it tomorrow with all the staff. But I'm pleased to share that our, who our new planning director is going to be, so she's completed all of her pre-employment processes and given notice to her current employer, so LaShawn Cross, who's an experienced planning professional with over 28 years in the profession, will be joining the city on June 17th as our new planning director. LaShawn will be coming to us from the county, where she has worked for over 23 years, having progressed through the ranks, and is serving now as the division manager, I think, in current planning with the Contra Costa County Department of Conservation Development. In those various roles, she's worked on a lot of projects, large and small, with a variety of complexities. For example, she's worked in their smaller community, unincorporated communities, Rodeo, Alamo, Kensington, on their planning issues, but she also has a lot of great experience in a variety of areas that I think will serve us very well. I think she's got a fabulous personality, approach to issues, seemed very unflappable through the two-panel process we put her through in my interview with her. She does have a Master's in urban planning from San Jose State and a Bachelor of Arts in Landscape Architecture from UC Berkeley. She, she lives nearby in Pinole. She's very excited to be joining us, so she'll be starting on June 17th, and she'll have a week's overlap with our interim planning director. I know Robert's very excited about this announcement, probably more so than anyone else, but they'll have a week's overlap, and he'll still be available as a resource. I want to thank Robert for his great service here to help us get through this transition period. So, great news, and very happy to share that with the council and the community. And then, we are having, I want to thank Mayor G and others, our legislators who helped us get this on the calendar, on Wednesday, the 29th next week, we're going to have a town hall in insurance that'll feature one of the deputy commissioners from the Department Insurance, the representative of the insurance commissioner. That'll be at 6:00 PM in this room.
Hang on a minute.
No, she agreed to move it back a half hour, I think. Mickey, do you recall? I, I thought she did.
5:30 to 7, I think?
I thought it was 5:30 to 7.
You're right, sorry, 5:30 to 7, thank you.
Yeah, she agreed to move it back.
Right, she wanted to start at 5:00. Thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry. We've, we've got a couple of these things coming up. And then on, of course, June 1st, we're going to have our Wildfire Prevention and Safety Fair, which will be in the community park, starting at 10:30, 10:30 to 1:00. We're getting great participation from vendors and display, people who'll be doing displays, and I, interesting, also, the, the fire-safe neighborhoods are going to use our event as their primary educational event to requalify, so I think we'll get, for their national certification, I think we'll get very good turnout, we're very excited about that. And then just on June 4th will be the next meeting of the council's infrastructure committee, so that'll be on June 4th, so watch for that agenda to be coming out shortly. Thank you very much.
And tomorrow night, we have a two-by-two.
Oh, yes, yes.
Meeting with MOFD. And I should also, it's been a very long day, I should also note that I had a second meeting with the Bay Area Council Task Force on the homeowners' insurance crisis, and one of the near-term action items that should be showing up is, there should be a new op-ed appearing in Bay Area media from myself and the mayor of Pleasant Hill. So, that's just one more, one more step of others to come, so I did want to report on that. I guess I would ask staff, hopefully, we're going to announce the insurance town hall far and wide and every hour on the hour between now and next week.
Yes, it appeared in the Arinda Outlook on Monday, which is the first opportunity since it was confirmed, and we're doing social media posts as well, so people can help us get the word out to, share the word, so we'll continue to publicize that.
Okay, so let's make sure we, and perhaps council members can also, I know we've had a lot of interested people contacting us, so we'll make sure that, and we'll raise it on tomorrow night as well, I'm sure, so. Okay, that, very excited to hear about our planning director coming on board, and again, Robert, hopefully we'll have, well, hopefully he'll come back for one more day and let us thank you. No, are, are you going to still be, you'll still be here on June 8th?
Oh, you got, got him for at least two more council meetings.
Okay.
No, one, one more council meeting, yeah.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll have you back at least one more time, huh? Okay, that brings us then, are there any matters initiated tonight? Looking this way, looking this way, seeing none, we'll say no. So, that brings us to adjournment, and our next city council meeting is our session that starts this Thursday, May 23rd at 9:30 in the Sarge Room. So, with that, our next regular evening council meeting is going to be.